Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It's Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. It's 6:45 PM, and we are ready to start our regular meeting. The meeting has been called to order. If you can, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There is nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So we will start off with item number one, which is a ceremonial item to recognize the National Volunteer Week, which is this week, no, next week, April 21 to April 27. And the National Volunteer Week is an annual event that is celebrated during the third week of April, with this year's observance being from April 21 to April 27. It has been celebrated since 1974, and this week-long celebration is about shining a light on the individuals and organizations whose invaluable contributions through volunteering make our city and community better. Voluntarism not only directs the community, but it can also empower individuals to find their purpose and can provide opportunities to turn passion into meaningful change. I encourage everyone to join one of the city's volunteer groups, find ways to support our partner organizations, or share stories and appreciation for all our local volunteers. And to all the volunteers in our city, thank you. Thank you for your important contributions. They are much appreciated. They are very much appreciated. Thank you again, and happy National Volunteer Week. Okay, moving on. Are there any postponements, Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item, the fee schedule that has been proposed to be postponed.
Okay, we need a motion to do that, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I will move to postpone it to the next council meeting. Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote by lights. Thank you very much.
Motion carries unanimously.
We have oral communications now, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes, and that is discretionary. But for today, it is three minutes. And are there any cards, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak from Community Hall, and I see no hands raised virtually. Just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak, have your hand raised virtually or your speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes.
Okay, so we will start with the first speaker.
Brooke Ezit, followed by Donna Austin, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Great, and each of you will have three minutes.
Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'd like to know when the city will start respecting its residents. It appears that the residents are lesser beneficiaries of the largesse of the city when it comes to people coming into the city hall and asking for free pickleball courts or whatever. It would really be nice if the city would regard its residents with the same respect that it does with outside interests. Secondly, all of the studies that the city does, I mean, I come to the conclusion that you would study your navals if you could find a credible organization to do that. As a resident, what this says to me is that you don't have any respect for your staff because you don't think that they're competent enough to do it, and you have to go to outside interests. Who would know better what's going on and how to do things than the staff? I'm not sure if you're addicted to spending money, or if there's something more nefarious, and you are looking for an appeal to authority to shift the blame to an outside consultant. But this council needs to have more respect for its citizens, more respect for its staff, and you need to have respect for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Donna Austin, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Donna.
Mayor Mohan, and Vice Mayor Fruein, and the City Council. My name is Donna Austin. I attended a wonderful Cupertino-Sunnyvale League of Women Voters event a few weeks ago. It was to meet and greet city officials, mayors, school board members, city managers, county supervisors. Our city manager, Pamela Wu, gave an outstanding, positive opening talk about our working together to solve our budget issues. I was really proud of her. Yet, at that same event, while everyone was meeting and greeting, our city manager was being bullied by Rhoda Frye. I heard Rhoda loudly telling Pamela Wu that she was the worst city manager, and that she made Rhoda's friend cry. I couldn't hear everything else, but I rushed over beside her because I was so appalled. No one should be allowed to disrespect our city manager, our city staff, our city council, our commissioners. You are people that are working for us, and you're brave enough to do that and serve us. And I was just appalled at this. Bullying is just not an accepted form of communication. And I want it on the record, because I know we have a code of ethics. I know that the grand jury was very concerned that we had seven city managers in four years. We need to respect our staff and our city council each other, and I just want this on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And next, we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello, City Councils. Good to see you all. We're having lovely weather, and hopefully we'll have some nice spring coming up. I just wanted to start out, I'm very, very concerned about Senator Weiner and some of his new bills. Senator Weiner seems to keep a lot of the public in California very, very busy, because he's had so many bills that he has churned out in the, I think we're in nine years of his 12 years. And the current four of them appear to be now going after the Coastal Commission. I'm very, very concerned about this, because these bills, I'm going to call them his omnibus bills, for lack of a better term, because when you first looked at them, you think that it just pertains to San Francisco. But that isn't true anymore. He's, he and, and there's another gentleman, Mr. Alvarez, from San Diego, who has one of the bills, and then there's two more with other legislators from California. And it's, it's not just San Francisco. It's not just San Diego. It is the entire coastal area of California. And I am beginning to believe that, yes, okay, maybe they want to open up our fragile coast to more housing, but, you know, I have a lot of relatives that have lived in the coastal area, in Santa Cruz, Monterey, for many, many years, and I can tell you that that coast cannot take any more building. I don't know if you all realize, but the CZU fire in Santa Cruz almost burned up the city of Santa Cruz if they had not held the northern line. This is how close we are to disaster. The CZU fire could have gone down to the San Mateo coast, to the ocean. This is no place for people to be making trivial comments, et cetera, et cetera. I think that also there's a higher motive here. I am very concerned, because the federal government sold the offshore rights of California coast to groups that are going to be putting in offshore wind, which is fine, the turbines, et cetera. I'm familiar with them. My nephew is currently working in Holland as a programmer, and they are actually working with some of the solar, et cetera. So I'm very, very familiar with this. But I, I don't know why, my gut level is Senator Weiner is trying to do something to make, to take away local control at the coastal level, give it to Sacramento, and then give it to the feds. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we will move to two people that we have virtually, Mayor. We have Rhoda Frye and San Ar requesting to speak. Rhoda, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm going to talk about money, which is one of the things I often speak about, budget. You know, I was glad to see that the free tea and coffee was removed from the, from the vestibule outside of the city council hall. It was, it was the right thing to do, and it was, you know, the right gesture. I'd like to see more savings on the staff side, and contracts as well. One of the things that I stumbled onto, which is in your packets, was that we had a contract that included meals plus a 5% fee for contractors, and I would like to see meals removed from contracts that we have. And, and I am hoping that we are not doing lavish meals for our employees at this point either. Another thing I was thinking about was right sizing the mileage allowance. At some, employees get $300 a month for, for car allowance, but others only get maybe 200 a month, and then some, of course, get zero. And it seemed strange to me that higher-paid employees got a bigger allowance than perhaps somewhat lower employees, and I think that maybe a fixed rate would be more appropriate. Again, somewhat of a ceremonial thing. But we do have the elephant in the room, and that is, for a really long time, we've had a lot of money sitting in a cash account, and right now, that cash account is upwards of $50 million. We are not making interest on about $50 million. Getting interest on about $50 million could resolve many of our problems, and not having that money bearing interest, I believe, is an improper use of funds and a dereliction of fiduciary duty. So I'm asking you to make sure that, right away, we start earning money on that $50 million. This is shocking to me that we would have an account that has zero interest on $50 million. I can see having zero interest on a smaller amount, like most other cities do. Let's get that interest going, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. And next, we have San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila and City Council. I would like to express my appreciation for the efforts of the Finance Department of city staff. I had the occasion of, I had the privilege of attending several of the budget community meetings and Budget Focus Group as well. And it was really heartening to see the passion and the effort that was put in by Christine Alfaro, as well as Thomas Long and other members of the finance team. And I believe outreach like this by staff is really going to help build trust with the community, allow for unfettered access and ability to get questions clarified, and, and further improve communication across the city, so that some of the, some of the fear, uncertainty, and doubt can be reduced. So I want to give a shout out and appreciation for all of that, the outreach that was done. It was unfortunate that we didn't have enough residents taking advantage of it. My only feedback there would be to please try and schedule these after 6:00 PM, so that working residents can make these events as well. I would also hope that city council members might drop in and attend these and provide the same kind of access to residents as, as the Finance Department did this time. A lot of tools were created, a lot of resources were put out there. Open Gov is a fantastic resource, and just want to thank everything that staff did for, on that occasion. I also want to bring to your attention that we are now starting to see some panhandling incidents that are pretty aggressive. In Cupertino, at Stevens Creek and D'Anta, we're seeing panhandlers rushing into the lanes and, and literally walking up to cars, and fairly aggressive panhandling, and they're barely able to jump out of lanes before the lights turn green. It's getting really concerning. I'm hoping that we're not going to have some kind of pedestrian incident because of those, particularly if you can't see them. I hope you can, you can direct court enforcement and maybe even have a conversation with the Sheriff's Department to look into these panhandling incidents and reduce that. It seems to be something new, and I hope you can direct some attention to that as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no further comments for this item.
Great. Thank you to all the speakers who took, made the effort to make their presentations. We will now move on to the-
Can I ask for some follow-up?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So I think this issue has been brought up a few times. I would appreciate maybe a memo or report from staff about the cash amount of $50 million that's not earning interest. I don't know if it is true or not, but I would like to find out.
Of course. The memo has been provided to council, but we'll follow up with another memo tomorrow.
But if the public, yeah, okay, likely didn't address the issues that they have. And can we get an update on the panhandlers, that, and what the sheriff may be doing about it?
Of course. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam City Manager, have any items been pulled off the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor. As of yesterday, no, actually, today's new deadline, Item 6, Item 7, and Item 9 have been pulled by Councilmember Chow. And City Clerk has been provided the reasons from Councilmember Chow for why they are pulled.
Okay. What I'd like to do is move the order on the agenda today. Normally, we, items that are pulled off consent are discussed or taken up after the study session. I would like to take care of it before the action calendar. And if there's no objection, we should, we need a motion for that, right? So Items Number 6 and 7 to be discussed before the action calendar.
How about 9?
What's it?
How about 9?
Oh, no. And Item Number 9 can go after the consent calendar. Is there a motion to change the order? Councilmember Moore, you had a comment?
No, no, I was just going to move your request.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, all right, so we move on to-
Rest of consent.
Oh, yes, the rest of the consent calendar. Are there any comments on the rest of the consent calendar from the public? Any public comments?
Yes, let's see. Actually, no, because 6, 7, and 9 were all pulled. So let me see, I see one hand actually raised by Rhoda Frye, so let me just check and see if, if she is commenting on Items 3 through 5, or 8. Hi, Rhoda, do you have comments on Items 3, 4, 5?
Accounts payable?
Item 4.
Yeah, so I'd like to say, one of the things that we've been talking about is, is having more transparency, and I'd like to see everything on accounts payable. And right now, we are not seeing everything on accounts payable. And one of the biggest expenses that we have is staff expenses. And although I don't think we need to see the granularity of what each paycheck was for city, for city employees, which we have in the past, I think that we need to have that big number, so that we are constantly reminded as to really where our money is, how are our public funds are being spent. Because right now, it's a black box. The concern is that over, my concern is that over the years, our staffing expenses have, have ballooned, and also just the number of staff that we do have. I, I think that we need to pay the staff that does a great job above, above going wages, absolutely. And this, maybe the staff that aren't pulling their weight should not be part of our Cupertino family. And when I see so many people who are presently employed by the city, it makes me wonder, because our population is, is going down, it's not going up. And I'd like to see us get closer to where we were, you know, around 2019. I know, I know things are getting more expensive, but it just seems that things are getting a bit out of hand. Regardless, for the sake of transparency, can we please get a report next time we do accounts payable? So that's asked. Next time we do accounts payable, what are the things that are we not seeing? Just maybe that we won't necessarily see them, but I'd like to know at least what they are. And, and, and I think that would help us really understand where our money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no additional speakers for consent items.
All right. So, oh, Councilmember Chow, you had a comment?
I have a question. So the question that was brought up by Rhoda Frye, is it applicable to add it to the accounts payable or not? I don't know. For, I think she was asking for staff salary to be added.
The purpose of accounts payable is to determine if checks issued by the city were, you know, validly paid, and council is ratifying the payment of those checks. So I, I'm not sure that it would make sense to include staff salaries in that. But of course, their staff salaries are all public information.
So if a member of the public would like to know in more detail, beyond accounts payable, where the money goes, why, where would you suggest that they go, look for that? Because budget is only an estimate, but actuals don't come out until a few months after the annual finance, so.
Yeah, I would, I would need to defer to our Finance and Administrative Services Team to answer that question. I have, could, could guess, but I'm not the expert.
Okay, I can take the answer later.
I believe most of them are available on Open Gov, but we can definitely reach out to Ms. Frye afterwards to find out exactly what she's looking for.
I thought the Open Gov only has the budget, not the actual expenses.
The actual expenses are there, too.
They're there. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. With regards to, to payroll, it did used to come to the council, and then there was, I believe, some kind of a resolution in the, around 2013 to no longer have it come to council. My concern with the ratification has to do with what information we actually have to, to perform this. So I did include the City of Dublin's policy, and perhaps we can offline look into this, because the City of Dublin will receive the accounts payable, and then they leave the ratification to the ACFR at the end of the year. So it's, because we're not actually auditing these statements, it becomes audited when the ACFR goes over it.
I'm, I'm not sure if we want to get into this extensive discussion, but we'll definitely take your questions offline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's conclude the consent calendar items.
Mayor, we need a vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We will vote on the consent calendar, other than Items Number 6, 7, and 9.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, that we approve Consent Calendar Items 3, 4, 5, and 8.
And 10.
And 10.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Please vote by lights.
And Mayor, I just need you to vote, please. Yeah, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so let's move on to the action calendar then, or the two items that we said we would discuss before the action calendar, which is Item Number 6 and Number 7. And Councilmember Chow, you asked for these to be pulled, and what were your reasons?
So I'm sharing that on screen. Oh. I'm sharing that on screen. I read that a member of the public brought up during the first reading that the language "good faith and diligent effort" is not sufficient to ensure Cupertino can capture the local portion of the sales and use tax that we deserve to get. I have since verified that we did include assertive language for the Apple Park DA, and other cities like San Jose do include more assertive language in their DA. There's, I would like to consider removing the phrase "good faith and diligent effort" from the requirement, unless the staff could provide information on past projects to show that good faith and diligent efforts are sufficient to capture sales tax for Cupertino. And the screenshot below is a section of the DA. This refers to the sales tax point of sale designation.
I just want to remind our council that this is the second reading for, for the adoption of the ordinance, and I'm not sure, and maybe the city attorney can confirm this, this is probably not the right time to negotiate terms of an agreement, which we already heard and discussed the last time, for, for both, for, for both the hotels. So I'm, I'm going to toss this to City Attorney.
So I mean, if the question is, if council is, is able to consider changes to the ordinance, the answer to that question is yes. However, I would caution council against wordsmithing contractual language on the dais.
Can I ask?
Let me go to Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, you have, okay, three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if Councilmember Chow, if you could put up that document on the screen again? I just want to ask.
I doubt it.
Thank you. So, because I felt pretty comfortable with the, with the first sentence there of 5.5, "the developer shall use good faith diligent efforts to the extent allowed by law." That, to me, seems to provide a level of confidence that this is going to happen, and that we're not going to try to do something beyond what the law would allow. And I was wondering if the city attorney could, could comment on my interpretation of this sentence? Yeah, again, I, I think, you know, I'm going to be cautious about giving a, you know, a legal opinion on the dais, but I mean, this is the standard language in our, in city development agreements. It's common, similar or identical language in other development agreements. It, you know, "good faith and best efforts" is common contractual language. You know, as you said, there, there, there might be legal constraints on the ability to localize taxes in some, some situations, so this language recognizes that. And then, you know, as, as the council is aware, this is also, to a certain extent, a shifting area of law, you know, and, and there is legislative and regulatory efforts in this area. So, you know, I would, I would think that this- So, you know, I would, I would think that this language balances those concerns with the interest that Councilmember Chow has expressed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, if you could take two minutes, and then...
Okay, so I, I need to declare extraparte communication, because when I pulled the item, I reached out to both applicants to notify them that I am considering this potential change and see, I would like to get their feedback on whether this is feasible. And I have learned, I think both of them almost said that they didn't know how to get, all we want is a use tax direct payment permit. Both of them said they didn't know the process. So I think, I'm not trying to change the contract today for these two, however, I think this means if we could actually capture it, that's $1 million of tax revenue for Cupertino. So I would like a commitment going forward to all the development projects that will be coming to Cupertino, that we, because good faith and diligent efforts, when it's upon the applicants to do it, and they don't know how to do it, they are not going to spend time to figure out. So I think it's upon the city to help the developers, the applicants, to figure out the process, to capture the sales tax for the city, so that way they can designate, and their subcontractors can designate the city as a point of use of the construction material. I think I've heard many times, development, it will generate this benefit to Cupertino because we'll get sales tax from construction materials. But I just learned in the last meeting, we may or may not get it unless we are doing our due diligence to do this. So I want to be sure, can I get some commitment from staff that we ensure this is more implemented? And can I get some information about past projects? So I have a piece of comfort that this is actually being, good effort is put in there. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei, please, three minutes.
So when it comes to good faith diligent efforts, I think relationship building is very important. We have developers going to build something in Cupertino, so they have invested into Cupertino. So I do believe that good faith and diligence is part of what they want to do. If they want to invest in Cupertino, they want Cupertino to thrive. So legally, I'm not sure how far we can go, but to have that relationship building, and that this is your community, and that's everyone's job, to really say you are part of us, and you are investing into Cupertino. And I see nods from our representatives in the audience. So I want to say, yes, I think our staff will diligently do that too. If we can capture sales tax, of course, that's great. But if we can't, that's because they've done their diligence, and it's not going to happen. But I do believe that this is a good point to emphasize that good faith and diligence, that we are building relationships. We're looking for win-win situations. So that's what I would really like to say, our residents, our council, our investors, and our staff, we all work together for the benefit of Cupertino. And when we have money, we can serve our residents better, we can serve your customers better too. So I think this is all very connected. It's that connection, it's that building trust and building mutual beneficial relationships that is going to make this happen. So I am very pleased, and legally, it's there too. We cannot do something that's not legal. So I think we have our legal counsel here, and I'm very comfortable with the language. And I think if we have a developer, we don't build relationships. It's hard to get that good faith diligent try, right? And we have, I see them in the audience, so I do believe that they are part of us, and let's build that relationship. Let's make sure that we all have mutually beneficial investors, and residents, and the city. So I am personally comfortable with the language that's in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frue?
I'll be brief. So, the original purpose of having these DA extensions was to help ensure that these two hotels can actually be built. And if we go around trying to impose additional requirements that would result in one or both hotels not being built, that seems like it is entirely contrary to the purpose of what we were trying to do. The other issue that I see here is that, you know, at this late hour, we should not be trying to renegotiate something that we already agreed to. I don't think that that builds good faith from our direction. When we make an agreement with an outside party, we ought to be able to project to them that we're going to uphold our side of the bargain so that we can expect the same in return. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I too wanted to say that this was an important economic development move, when the two hotels decided to ask us to request, ask us to extend the development agreement, which we did last time, and it seemed like it was sort of the beginning of almost rejuvenation for, for the city. And I know how excited many of us were at the thought of getting two new state-of-the-art hotels, and both the owners and the developers made the concessions about the Bird Safe and Dark Skies ordinance, which was not originally in the, in the agreement. So, and so if you're talking about good faith, then I see that as an indication of good faith. So I, myself, would approve this. But before we do anything, I'd like to ask the public if they have any comments on this issue. Are there any cards? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak in Community Hall, and I see one hand raised virtually. Jennifer Griffin and Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jennifer.
I'm very, very pleased, so we're talking about six, and I'm assuming we'll be doing seven again later, okay. So we're talking about the Cupertino Village Boutique Hotel, and I am very, very pleased with the hotel. This is a quality hotel, excuse me?
Ms. Griffin, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, and you can restart your time. Mayor, are we taking public comment on six and seven, or just six?
We are taking comments on both six and seven.
Oh, I didn't realize that. I put in, and that's fine, because I have...
Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Are we getting different sets of comments? We are taking both six and seven as, as one item?
I believe that is what council voted on?
Okay.
Agreed on? Is that, that? Yes, is that, did we consolidate the two items?
Exactly.
So, yes, so Jennifer and Jean both would like to speak on six and seven.
Okay. And that's fine, because everything I have to say about six is the same as seven. I always get messed up on consent calendar. Anyway, I'm very pleased with both the hotels coming out of six and seven. They're quality projects, the developers are quality groups, we're very happy to have them in Cupertino. We hope that they build these quality hotels. The, the, people are coming back to Cupertino for business. Apple requires all hands on deck now, I think, two to three days a week. We have a very active tech, which involves the whole world, they are coming to Cupertino, and we need quality places for them to stay, along with tourists, and hopefully the local residents. And I would say at this point, if we can benefit from the sales tax from this, all the more. I, and I do think that we have a point that as we're going forward, it would be nice that developers that are coming to build things in Cupertino are aware of the tax situation that's being used for these two hotels, and it could be offered to them so that they could contribute to this too. Because let's face it, it's all hands on deck, the state budget is a mess right now, Cupertino has a lot of challenges, and anything that a developer can bring to Cupertino and provide more income for the city, where their quality project is going to be located for many years, all the better to have that money and revenue going into Cupertino. We want them here, and we also want their dollars too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Jean Bedord. And I see one hand raised virtually.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I'm here to object to this item being pulled. I think it's ridiculous. First of all, this is a second reading. You've already discussed this, you know, ad infinitum, and passed it on the first reading. You can't re, it's not, this is not the time and place to rehash it. Second of all, I object to the substance of it. Cupertino does not have construction materials. So why are we building barriers to developers to go out and get materials and create additional barriers to doing business in Cupertino? Cupertino already has a bad reputation. This would send yet another signal that stay out of Cupertino, they're too, too big a hassle to deal with them. It costs you time and money. Also, I think this is a complete waste of time for the public, the council, and the staff to not ju, to do anything other than to pass this on the consent calendar. It extends the length of the meetings, it's a poor practice, and I think you need to look at what is actually happening. Please, please, when things are on the consent calendar, that's where they should stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And we have one hand raised virtually, Mayor, Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. This is for items six and seven combined.
Hi, I'd like to thank Councilmember Leong for bringing this issue up. So really, this is an opportunity for us to shed light on the issue, and an opportunity to bring in more sales tax revenue, although it be at one time, but as we continue to do construction, one time plus one time plus one time over time. And not that we're looking to change an agreement, but that we're looking to educate our partner developers when they come into the city Cupertino. A lot of people, businesses might not realize that shopping Cupertino, or having your place of business in Cupertino is a good thing. Why? Alameda's sales taxes are higher, San Mateo County's sales taxes are higher, and three cities in Santa Clara County's sales taxes are higher, including Santa Z. So the place of business happens to be Cupertino, so it's not about shopping Cupertino. It has to do with if you purchase items outside of Cupertino's, and they have multiple locations, say Home Depot has multiple locations, then purchases made within, as your place of business in Cupertino ought to get that Cupertino sales tax. Many people don't realize that the Home Depot that we have so close to Cupertino is actually in Santa Z, but it is. So we have an opportunity with these two hotels to capture some sales, a lot of sales tax revenue, you think about all the furnishings that goes on there, but also the materials. My estimate is between, you know, half a million to one and a half million. And when we're talking about getting rid of some things, you know, some of our small luxuries, but also some big things, I think that investing some time, we have employees on staff who now have a better understanding on how these sales taxes work, and this should be part of our economic development. We bring a developer in, let's talk with them, and say, look, how can we be a win-win? And maybe even make it more, even more attractive to them. Certainly, they will, they have the opportunity to potentially save money by having their place of purchasing being assigned to Cupertino. So I, I'm, I think that some of the council members have missed the nuance in this, and, and we need to find every opportunity that we can to bring in revenue. Some, some of them are easier than others, certainly, as I said earlier, we've got $50 million in cash, we ought to be earning interest on it, and also let's get those sales tax dollars rolling to Cupertino whenever we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, no further speakers on this, on these two items?
Thank you. I'd like to bring this back to the council, and I would like to have a motion.
I'm happy to move the item to approve both the contract for second reading. Do I need to read anything, or is this sufficient?
No, no, that's, it's sufficient to move the staff recommendation, which is to conduct the second reading for both ordinances, 22, excuse me, 242258 and 242259.
Okay.
Okay.
But I do have some comments to make, yeah.
Okay, let's, is there a second?
Councilmember Moore, second? And I do have a request that we receive some information with regards to the laws and regulations for construction contractors. What would happen if we didn't put this little clause in our development agreement, and then what happens with it? I'd like to hear some more information about that. Thank you.
Yeah, we can follow up on that.
Councilmember Chow, you had a comment?
Yeah.
This is a wrap, we're trying to wrap it up, so if you could...
So although the applicants are local, but a lot of times contractors and subcontractors are not local, they have no association with Cupertino at all. And also, this requirement does not require purchasing from Cupertino. A lot of people misunderstand that. It's just designating Cupertino as the use site of the material, so the sales tax doesn't go to the county pool, or even another county. And the language provided by staff in the DA actually is pretty comprehensive, it's good, except I'm not sure if good faith effort is enough. So I hope that the staff can provide more information later on past projects to show the good faith effort is enough. If it is not, I hope that we, the city, do more to help the applicants to comply with the requirements, so we can capture more sales tax. I bring this up today so that this conversation does not happen next time when another DA or development project is at the council dais, and then I have to ask all these questions. So I am bringing it up now, so that next time, we have better procedure so that we can capture more revenue, sales tax, use tax revenue for Cupertino. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Shall we vote by lights, please?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So now we go to the action calendar, item number 11. Madam City Manager, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. As Christine and her team getting ready for the podium, so I'll just do a quick intro. Council, remember that we brought a study session to you in January, talking about the proposed service level reduction, and we received instruction from council from that meeting, and received additional information for questions that we're not be able to answer in January. So this is kind of coming back to council to follow up on the items that had remain, remaining unanswered questions. Our hope tonight is to get a confirmation from council that these are the service level reduction that council would like to see, so that we can build into the proposed budget that will be coming to you in May. And as Thomas is bringing up his presentation, I would like to point out that we have been getting a lot of emails in the past day or so, concerned about sidewalk and tree, city tree maintenance, service level reduction. And Thomas can go into the detail in his presentation, but as alluded to in the staff report, those items will remain as city funding. So just want to emphasize that there potentially was a confusion circulating amongst the community members, but those items will, after hearing from council's instruction and also feedback from the community members, those fundings will remain as part of the proposed budget. That said, I'll turn the presentation to Christine and Thomas. That said, I'll turn the presentation to Christina and Thomas.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, Mayor Mohan and City Council. Today, I'm pleased to present you an update on the potential service level reductions and to receive any confirmation or further direction before we include anything in the proposed budget. First, I'll start with some background. So on January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, staff sought City Council's direction on potential service level reductions to help the city's structural budget deficit. At that time, council did provide feedback and directed staff to provide additional information on some items. That information has been included in the staff report. And we also have some changes to our service level reductions, which I'll describe, describe in the next couple of slides. And again, as City Manager Wu talked about, the objective of today's meeting is to receive your confirmation on these service level reductions. And we will use the feedback from this meeting as well as the January seventeenth meeting in order to build the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget, which you'll then discuss in May and then potentially adopt in June. Now, I'll present the changes to service level reductions. The first item is regarding crossing guard services. On January seventeenth, City Council directed us to retain that item. And so that item will be retained in the budget for fifty thousand. Another change on the staff side is related to adding back one internal audit. So originally, staff was planning to reduce internal audit by two projects, but now we're only reducing it by one project. So the budget for internal audit will be sixty thousand, down from last year's cost of a hundred thousand. The next item is related to shifting school district grounds maintenance to the school district. And so this was an item that staff did investigate. But for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, this reduction is proposed to be eliminated. Street tree maintenance, I'll just like to add, as City Manager Wu did, that the city would continue to maintain street trees for residents. However, the change will be in lengthening the tree trimming cycle from seven to ten years, as well as reducing the frequency of median maintenance, particularly medians that are, you know, not on main streets. And so the budget reduction for this will be two hundred thousand rather than the original four hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then the last one is related to sidewalk maintenance. And again, the city would continue to maintain sidewalks. And so costs will not be shifted to residents. Instead, the new SLI will be shifting the focus from removal and replacement of sidewalks to grinding, particularly for tripping hazards unless there's an extreme situation. And the new reduction will be six hundred thousand instead of one million. And so this is a summary. And so you can see with operations and maintenance, it's gone from three point zero eight million to three million. And then infrastructure, which is the last page, four point four million to three million. In total, our reductions are going from ten point five million to nine million dollars. And as you heard on the January seventeenth meeting, our structural deficit in the first year was expected to be ten point one million. And while that nine million dollars is less than that gap that we're trying to close, we will present an updated forecast as part of the proposed budget. And the city is also working on balancing the budget using either fund balance or adjustments to our revenues. Now I'll be describing recommendations and next steps. So this is the roadmap to a budget adoption. You can see that we started in October. We've been meeting with City Council monthly. We've also had a variety of outreach, for example, focus groups, two community budget meetings, as well as budget outreach at the library and Earth Day. Today, we have a service level reduction update number two. And then in May, we also have a third quarter budget update and our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget study session. And all this leads up to our budget adoption in June. Our recommendation for tonight is for council to provide us with confirmation on potential service level reductions for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five proposed and final budgets. And then council would still have the opportunity in May and also in June to either provide further direction or adopt any of the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the council will, can ask questions of the staff for clarification. And each of us gets five minutes. I am not, yeah, Councilmember Chow, you want to go first?
Yeah, okay. So I think in the supplemental report, I asked a breakdown of some of the items from the January seventeenth because they were lumped together. And then from that supplemental report, it seems the chamber contract of sixty thousand dollars is executed. Does that mean it's not cut? It says it's executed in the supplemental report.
So the chamber contract was recently executed.
So does that mean we are not cutting that?
I don't believe that was part of the reduction.
Hmm, yeah, it is. It's part of the reduction on the partnership. That's in the supplemental report, actually. And also that the license plate reader program, I think that's about five thousand dollars. It also says it's not cut. It's just continued to next year. So could you please clarify? Thank you.
And just to clarify that, so everything, the direction we received from council, all of these items that, that Councilmember Chow just mentioned were included in the community benefit portion on the one-seventeenth meeting. And the direction we received from council is to keep those items, but look for alternate funding. And that's why they haven't been done as an update. Staff is still looking for a different alternate funding and will bring that update as part of the proposed budget. At that point, council can decide if there is no alternative funding, if you still wish to move forward with either continuing that service or not.
But the con- chamber contract was on the seventeenth list, right?
Correct, under community benefits.
Um, I think it was the sister city partner, it was a nonprofit partnership under that item, not community benefits. But this item is not cut, right, because we have executed that contract?
I, I mean.
Is that correct?
Thomas, if you can pull the list from January, it might take a second. But I think what Director Afaro was alluding to is the chamber contract was part of the community funding that was in the last category. So council had provided direction not to remove those funding, but look for sponsorship. Therefore, we proceeded with the chamber to execute the contract and the funding remains.
Okay, um, that's good to know, but it would be, have been nice if the staff report included that. And how about the license plate reader? I'm confused on that.
And then I think that was also included. And, and, and I apologize for the confusion.
That's a different item.
Uh, yes. And so those specifically were given instructions by council to remain as part of the proposed fund, uh, budget for next year. And, and to clarify, I think the reason we're coming back to council tonight were because there were specific questions that were directed to staff to follow up. The intention for today is not to go over item by item to revisit those that had already received a prior instruction. So there were specific questions that were given to street trees, sidewalk maintenance, and I think crossing guards, and also follow-up conversation with CUSD on the sports field and such. So the intent for today is to follow up with information on those items. So I apologize for the confusion, but that was the instruction that council had given to us.
Okay, the staff report mentioned any of those items? Not mentioned in the staff report, but in the January seventeenth list would proceed to be cut. That's my understanding. So, but then there are other council directions that were not captured in the staff report. So it would be great if we have an updated list of exactly which ones are not being cut.
We can certainly provide that. We do not understand that we needed to provide an update. And, and apologize for the confusion. I think we were simply coming back to provide additional information per council's request. But we can certainly provide an updated list.
And I would just like to add that those items are part of the community benefit category. And so council's direction on January seventeenth was to keep those and also look for additional funding. And so staff is still working on that. But as part of the proposed budget, staff will provide a comprehensive list that includes all the items from January seventeenth.
Councilmember Moore, three minutes, please.
Okay. Sorry, five. Thank you for, for the report. I'm wondering if we have somewhere with regards to economic development, because I would assume that the, the chamber grant would, would count for that. But we also have an economic development manager and we have various contracts, which I brought up at the, the previous meeting, which were adding to about six hundred thousand dollars worth. So I was wondering if somewhere is, is there a complete heading showing economic development and all of the initiatives that we have going? And if there isn't yet, could we have something like that? Because I'm seeing some of these contracts in, in different places, so it's, it's hard for me to be able to follow it. For instance, Attachment C from back February twenty-first, there's a, there's a lot of items in there, which, which I'm, I'm trying to follow. I've actually gone back to twenty-twelve, reading all the budget statements for the mid-year to see what's, what's happened each time to, to, to understand what the process is better. Yeah, so even when we, when we take this section, the service level reductions, and we take it kind of out of context with the whole budget, it makes it a little bit harder to look at these individual items when we have many, many pages of, of projects going from that Attachment C from, from February. And for instance, we got eighty thousand dollars for a community survey. I, I don't know what that was for, but I, I think about that big number there and, and this list here. And I'm wondering, well, you know, do we really want to continue that? We're not really sure what it is. And there's a number of projects like that on this list that I think could be debated. So I appreciate that these were selected. I think that there's even, even more that could be considered. Was there some thought about the, the fifty thousand dollar discretionary managers' fund? Because that hasn't been utilized. And I was wondering if that might be better shifted to retaining the internal audit budget of thirty thousand, yeah, thirty thousand dollars, because it actually helps the manager to have that audit information down the road. And maybe I'll bring that up when we get to our deliberations on this as a suggestion.
So I'll, I'll take a crack at it. I, I think as Christina reminded us at the beginning of this process last year, we're taking bite-sized approach to the budget. We have come to council with the multiple attempts, trying to look at different areas to either potentially reduce costs or increase revenue. Following up on our January study session was to look at specific targeted service level reduction. And as I mentioned, we're coming back again to answer those questions that were raised. Councilmember Moore has brought up a good questions in terms of city managers discretionary fund and additional information in regard to economic development, which we're working on a memo per your request from the last council meeting that will be coming to you shortly. But I think at our May twenty-first study session for the proposed budget, this is, that will be a council's opportunity to look at the budget comprehensively. CIP, city work program, service level reduction, revenue generated, and all that to build into our final budget. Again, I, I hate to sound like a broken record, but we're here to really look at a very narrow scope, which is the second review of the proposed service, service level reduction.
Okay, um, thank you. When this does come back, I have a, a request that I hope can be honored. And that is that we only have the budget on that evening's agenda. Because so many times, I can remember two years ago, I had twenty-four hundred pages to crash through between Thursday and the Tuesday meeting because there were extra things piled on the, the budget meeting on top of that. So if, if, how, when you're setting the agenda, if we can have it exclusively be on the budget so that we can thoughtfully look at the item, I would really be very appreciative of that.
You read my mind, so I'm hoping to have a conversation with my department heads tomorrow to dedicate at least a study session to be budget-only. We might add other finance-related item to it. I, I don't know if I can make the same commitment to the final budget hearing just because we have really a long list of projects that are coming to council for consideration before July. But your suggestion is, I mean, you read my mind, duly noted, and we'll do our best.
Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So can you put back the roadmap on, on the, on the, on the screen? So i- if I understand correctly, even for, for the start, I think City Manager would explain it really well, that we are taking bits and bits so that we understand more and dig, dig into it. And in May, we'll get the whole pictures so that we can make decisions. So this is, the roadmap is concentrated where we go, from where, and then. So today, we're talking about these items because we're going to dig into these items. And I want to really say, when you changed, you know, listen to the, what, what, what makes you change? The original proposals let the residents take care of the sidewalks, take care of trees. What prompted the adjustment? Did you listen to the public or from, is, is, is that a fair question to, to ask?
I, I will take that as Thomas trying to figure out how to put the roadmap back on this screen because we're looking at your screen.
That's okay. I want just to know we have a roadmap and we're following that roadmap.
We, we have a roadmap and we are taking different approaches and different category to council for consideration. So we learned from the January study session that council had a hard time making that reduction. And we've also got a lot of emails from the concerned citizens about the service level that we're proposing. I will say from the manager standpoint, this is a reality and wake-up call. We have not done our due diligence, reaching out to our constituents. So after the, the council meeting, Public Works Director, Assistant Director, and myself had a conversation with Finance Department to see what other ways we could provide a win-win, if you will. So we can continue to service our residents, however, perhaps on a much longer cycle on the tree maintenance and shifting some of the sidewalk, but also achieve that level of assurance that the service is not completely removed. So we worked really hard trying to accomplish that alternative. I'm hoping that the proposal before you tonight is a compromise. It's not ideal. It's not perfect. Don't get me wrong. But at least this is a compromise that we heard from both council and also the community's reaction.
So thank you, City Manager Wu. I want to rephrase this a little bit. I do believe it was a good practice for the council, for the staff to recommend something and it's a starting point. And then listen to the public, listen to the council. So I really want to say our staff are listening to the public and to the council. And I really want to commend the staff. I don't think you need to apologize. You proposed something that's going to save money because you have a budget to work on. But you adjusted according to the public input and the council input. And that is the process. I, I don't think it's, you need to apologize for proposing something that is going to, you know, save money, but you, and then you win, try a win-win situation. Because I hear from the public comments or communications that our public doesn't feel they're being listened to or respected. I, I really want to say, I, I don't think that is the case. That, that's why my question is, the process is, we have a roadmap and the staff makes recommendations, but the staff is not offended if the public and the council have otherwise provide other input and the staff adjusted. And that is the process that going to work very well for everybody here. So I just want to make sure that is my question. The purpose of a question is, what is the process? And I really think this is a good process. We are not stopping the staff from making drastic recommendations because that gives us thinking, right? Really, so I don't think I, you need, any of our staff need to apologize anything. And I think this is a really good process. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo some of Councilmember Wei's comments. When we had this discussion earlier, you had said that the structural deficit would be, what, ten point one million? And I, I think your budget reductions came up to that ten point one million. And, you know, there was a huge reluctance on the part of the council to cut back many of the sort of beloved community items, community programs. And I, our direction to staff was, we don't really want to cut any of this. So figure out a way to keep them going, but also make sure that it doesn't hurt the general fund. So that was sort of the two-pronged message that we sent to you. And I am really pleased that you came up with these creative ways to keep the programs and yet not impact the general fund. I know we're a little bit short of the ten point one million. and yet not impact the general fund. I know we're a little bit short of the 10.1 million. And I think, Thomas, you indicated that there are other ways that we could fill that gap. So hopefully, by the time budget comes to fruition, we'll have better numbers, but the essence of the cuts will not change. Vice Mayor Frue?
So I'll echo a lot of that, especially your response to our direction, which I'm sure was confusing and frustrating, essentially. We want to keep as much as possible, but go and work some magic. I think you did. So I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the administration for breaking this down into bite-sized pieces. I think otherwise, if we were to come back every single time with the entire budget as part of our discussion, then our deliberation would look a little bit more like that. That sensation you get when you walk into a restaurant that has an enormous menu, and you suddenly wind up in a sort of decision paralysis, and you can't make up your mind, because there are too many options. So I think having these sorts of focused discussions is very good. And it's really on us to do the rest of our own research, if there's something that we want to examine on our own. One very specific question that I have for you actually regards the tiny little line item of the poet laureate program. In the staff report, you note that you reached out to the library as a potential partner. Did you also reach out to the Library Foundation?
I'll take that. We've, in fact, I have, in fact, reached out to the Library Foundation, Chamber, Rotary, you name it, I can keep going, keep going. I believe the program has received enough traction from potential donors. So Parks and Rec Director Rochelle and I will continue to work with potential donors to keep this program going.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any comments, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card from Jennifer Griffin to speak in Community Hall. Welcome, Jennifer. And I see two hands raised ritually.
Okay. Jennifer, you have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm going to start off and say that I think that the state has been extremely mean to Apple and to Cupertino. I think that this, whatever the state is doing to Apple and Cupertino, the tax agreement is legal. And I won't dwell into that much more, because I don't really have control over it. But I really, really want to take the state to task for dragging Cupertino's good name through the mud, and Apple's also. I'm very upset about it. But in that regard, I think the city and the staff have done a really good job of trying to deal with this. It's like a football's been thrown at us, and we can either be hit by it or try to receive it and make a touchdown. Oh, boy, that's great. I, when I first heard about the part about not maintaining the street trees and the sidewalks, my stomach got really upset. I have heard this before. We're going to cut down the street trees. We're not going to maintain the sidewalks. That is not a good plan, because people's quality of life in their immediate neighborhood goes down the drain. All of the work that the neighborhood has worked on for many, many years to maintain their trees and keep their sidewalks up through different entities is gone for naught. It causes a great deal of consternation, and it reduces people's quality of life. In that regard, my neighborhood was in the county. Our trees were planted in 1950. They were maintained by the county. We had sidewalks, Rancho Rinconada annexed in 2000, because our trees were being cut down six inches from the ground. These were 60-year-old, huge trees. It is gut-wrenching. I still have seen several of them that were cut down in the 90s, and it makes me sick on my stomach. It's like, to me, when people were going in in the 1840s and 50s and cutting our redwood trees down. Rancho has the largest number of trees and big trees in Cupertino, and I feel that not maintaining our street trees and our sidewalks is a slight to my neighborhood. There was an agreement with Cupertino in 2000, where $50,000 was put aside for the maintenance of the trees. And the city purchased a truck with a boom on it, so that they could take care of our good trees. It looks like we need to make sure that that agreement is maintained with the city, and it looks like you're on track to do that. Please maintain our trees and sidewalks. They will get cut down if we let them go to the owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have two hands raised on Zoom. We have Rhoda Frye and San Ar. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, again, councilmembers. Just wanted to do another shout-out to City Manager and staff for running the budget meetings. I went to three of them, and what was nice is they were all different from each other. One was recorded, so there's an opportunity for the public to, at least one was recorded, to see that. Unfortunately, as was mentioned earlier, they weren't particularly well-attended. But I do hope that the community can get more involved in what goes on with the budget. I was really, like Jennifer, I was really dismayed to see that the idea of not taking care of our sidewalks or street trees was considered. It is a public safety issue. I'm glad you've recognized that. But the other thing, the other thing that I'm surprised about also is that we're now talking about, well, we'll grind the sidewalks instead of replacing, replacing portions of them. And frankly, I would have hoped that that was already happening. And to that point of finding more opportunities to save, maybe we can also look for, you know, the type of plantings that we do, how much, how much love and care do the plants? Because we can have low-maintenance plants, and, you know, I don't think that planting annuals is going to get us very far. Maybe we can plant things that, or not at all, plants, I love plants, but things that are easier to maintain and cost us less. So thank you for listening to all of the voices of reason, and especially in the name of public safety to, for maintaining the city trees and city sidewalks. Also wanted to mention, I spoke with Parks and Rec Director Sander, Rochelle Sander, today, and she is, she's absolutely delightful, and, well, and a Cupertino cheerleader, I would say. And she's, she's really got the sense of keeping the community. I mean, that's what we're about. We want to keep the community in Cupertino. And, and just hearing the efforts that she's made in her department for keeping as much as possible while still maintaining that community, community service is truly laudable. And I'll close with that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. And next, we have San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to firstly thank the Finance Department, Christina, Thomas, and other city staff that were involved for listening, truly listening to questions and feedback, and doing everything they can. And I think it has been very helpful to see that the city's street trees and sidewalks will be maintained. I do urge you to look at making sure the visual appeal of the sidewalks is not lost in trying to downscope the grinding of the sidewalks where you need to instead of a replacement. So please continue to pay attention to the visual appeal of our sidewalks. In particular, I'd like to call out some of the items in the supplemental report that were not discussed, that I hope you will preserve. I will start with janitorial services. I hope that is not going to be reduced. This is not something we should even put on the list. Our city facilities are used by staff as well as the public, and we do not want to subject ourselves to a hygiene issue, or even worse, an illness because of the use cleaning of our facilities, especially facilities like the Spot Center, the Quinlan Center, City Hall, the library. All of these are very heavily used by the public, so please don't cut janitorial services. I wanted to make sure that that was brought up. I also wanted to make sure that we don't cut movies in the park. I thought we fought this battle last year, and it was saved last year, but I see it again on the list. And I hope that we're not going to try, once again, to eliminate or reduce anything to do with movies in the park. That is very well-attended. We have at least 3,000 people, with about 500 in each attendance of that session. So please don't do anything with movies in the park. And likewise, I was very concerned about seeing in that supplemental report that the sheriff's presence at the city or the park events are going to be now paid for by the sponsors. That is deeply worrying, because different sponsors may choose to prioritize differently. And as we know, unfortunately, there have been safety events and incidents that are concerning. So please consider maintaining a uniform level of law enforcement at these events. We want these events to be safe, and we do not want to compromise with law enforcement. I also saw a budget reduction on law enforcement, and the rationale there was that the Terrace Office had provided significantly less service than allowed under the budget. At that, at that juncture, it made me wonder if we need to provide more guidance and direction from staff and from council to make better use of our sheriff's department, because we could get more law enforcement for red lights, for speeding tickets, for cellphone use while driving, for parking violations. We could get more, you know, street patrols at night hours. So I urge you to revisit how you can use that budget, because law enforcement is important, crime is important, and safety is important. I see a lot of Vision Zero projects, but the number-one thing you could do is just make sure that law enforcement is getting a proper direction from you to protect our streets and to protect our residents.
Thank you, San. Then it's your time. And Mayor, no further speakers on this item.
Okay. Okay, thank you to everyone who participated. And now, let's bring it back to council. I'd like to start with a motion for discussion purposes only. You think I can get a motion? Councilmember Moore?
I move the recommended action with one modification, that the audit be retained at its current funding level, which is $70,000, and that we look for a funding source potentially from the Managers' discretionary fund. I think it's critically important, since our Audit Committee has had reduced number of meetings and reduced functions. One of the things I mentioned even earlier was with regards to the ratification of the payments, to make sure that we have a second set of eyes and a highly educated professional group that's doing that modification. So that is, that's my motion. Hopefully, I can get a second on that.
Councilmember Chow, is that a second?
I'll second that on... Yeah. So I have some comments. Do I make them now?
Can I provide just one point of clarification? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. The current proposal is to make that budget 70,000 from its original, I believe, 40,000. The original budget was 100,000. So I just want to make sure, are you looking for the 100,000 number or the 70,000?
Okay, so I want no reduction, so then it would be the 100,000. So you were trying to, okay, so the table's a little confusing me. Okay, so yes, I want to retain the 100,000, no 30,000 reduction. Correct? Okay, and I've given a potential source. All right, thank you.
And what is the potential source?
We have a $50,000 that hasn't been used. And in fact, it used to be up over, it got over 500,000, and it was not being used. So we've been scaling it back, and hopefully that can be put to work.
Okay. Let's vote by light, if we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Way, did you want to make us say something? Please go ahead.
So, we give the manager discretionary fund, and hopefully, we don't use it, but it's for emergency, for things that she needs to authorize. To deplete that again to 20,000? If there's a leak in the hallway, that means we have to come back to council and let a leak. So I am very concerned on that proposal. And when we talk about the audit, I like to ask the question for the finance team. Do you think we're okay with 70,000, or we need to 100,000?
So actually, we've spoken to Moss Adams to try to get a sense of what would be kind of the right spot to land on. And this is based on their recommendation on what they thought we would need going forward.
So I would not be in favor of deplete our manager's discretionary fund and put certain things at risk and not, and do 100,000 on an audit. If I believe in, Moss Adams have a good proposal for 70,000, I would think that should suffice to, you know, work really diligently and still have the Audit Committee function as much as it should function.
Vice Mayor Frue?
So I largely agree with Councilmember Way on this specific point. When I was on the Audit Committee last year, I seem to recall us discussing what potential projects could be brought forward this year. And the one that remained and is not immediately occurring to me was somewhat large, and we elected not to go forward with it. But as the mayor sits on the Audit Committee, perhaps she has a better recollection than I do. And I'd be curious to hear her thoughts.
So I was actually going to go back to the work plan that Moss Adams presented. And periodically, they do that at every meeting. So if they, if there's been no real, I mean, there's a work plan, and there's funding associated with that work plan. And if, is there, will there be any impact on the services or on any particular project that they set out to perform in the work plan?
Without getting too off-topic on this item, the work plan is presented by Moss Adams, our internal auditor. Sorry, I didn't reference that those are internal auditors earlier, for those that may be listening. They will bring a work plan to Audit Committee that will be based on, on an enterprise risk assessment, and say, based on these criteria, we think you should move these forward. And then Audit will either, will make recommendations to move forward as-is to City Council, and then it comes to City Council, and City Council can make that decision on which audits they would like Moss Adams to pursue.
Okay, so, okay, so we leave it at that for now. But if, is there any other discussion? We do have a motion, and we have a second. So do...
Mayor, I haven't made a comment after...
Okay, go ahead and make the comment. Councilmember Chow, you get two minutes.
We had a question period. The commenting period is only two minutes, not five? Okay, I'll try. So the first section is copied from the January 17th, and it's under the title, Elimination of Work Program. There are five items. From the supplemental report, these three items add up to the 75,000 for the whole item. Then therefore, two of the items have zero cost. And I would like to request to consider keeping these three items that I think are important. The diversified retail to enhance revenue and service, especially we now have a full-time economic development manager, and we have executed a 60,000 contract with Chamber. And reduce, I would hope that we don't reduce engagement with community, especially it costs $0. And I hope we don't reduce the support for law enforcement to locate vehicles and suspects associated with criminal activity. It seems to be $0. I don't, I'm confused with this. So, thank you.
Does staff want to make a comment?
I'm sorry, I am having trouble following Councilmember Chow's proposal. Thomas, do you know which list you're referring to?
Some of those items that had no cost, those are actually descriptions of the projects that were listed. So those are not separate projects.
Oh, so you mean law enforcement is not, it's a...
That's the license plate readers project.
Oh, so it's part of the license plate reader. I see. Now I understand. Okay. And then, in that case, I would like to keep the diversified retail to enhance revenue and service, so that we don't become a city of only restaurants. service so that we don't become a city of only restaurants. And I hope that this can be absorbed and done in-house. So to reduce the cost, could staff maybe consider how this could be done in a cost-efficient manner?
We can definitely take that into consideration. As I mentioned earlier, we are providing a memo on how city is operating on our economic division, economic development division. So if this additional $5,000 can help us to advance that mission, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, we still have, oh, Councilmember Way?
Sorry. First, I don't think we'll bring back things that's, should bring back things that's not on the agenda. And also, the second is, I would like to make a substitute motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make substitute motion for the staff recommendations section.
Second.
Okay, so seeing no other comments. Oh, Councilmember Moore?
I have a.
Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. One, I really appreciate that the crossing guards have been retained. However, I am disappointed that we could not shift some of that expense to the Fremont Union High School District. Possibly, they might have been able to help us out there. I'm glad that we're retaining the trees and the sidewalks with the city. I think that's going to help with the uniformity as well. Since it appears that we are not shifting the school district ground maintenance to the school districts, I want to bring up the fact that it appears that we are paying for the watering and the maintenance of the school grounds. And we have statewide water conservation as a way of life going on. And we are supposed to be reducing non-functional turf. So I hope that the city will determine if we are paying for the irrigation of non-functional turf or are we just taking care of the sports fields at these schools. And we hope to encourage the school districts to convert their non-functional turf, as I hope our city does as well. We have numerous areas of just regular grass that we need to be converting over, and it's not going to be a choice. I'm hoping also that when moving forward, you'll look into perhaps extending our vehicle replacement, perhaps two years there. And consider also the number of our composting and recycling bins which have plastics inside there. If there's some way that we can both reduce the number of plastic bags that we are sending to the landfill and reduce the amount of trash that's being generated and help people to cut back within the city. Thank you.
Okay, we still have a friendly amendment. Substitute motion proposed by Councilmember Way. We do have a second. And let's vote by lights on this substitute motion, please.
The substitute motion carries unanimously.
All right. Okay, we take a break.
For how long?
Five-minute break?
We'll come back at.
Should we say 8:30?
Okay, 10-minute break.
We're back from recess, and there comes Councilmember Moore. And we can get started. The next item is the study session and its staff presentation on the sixth cycle housing element update.
Mayor, thank you for the introduction. Before staff goes into the presentation, officially, I would like to give another shout out to staff for taking the city this close to the finish line. I know it's taken the community members, council, and myself very anxiously to get to this stage. But we are the envy of many communities tonight to get to that point. So I want to give another shout out to Ben, to Luke, and to Pew, and also the entire CDD team for taking us to where we are tonight. There are many, many countless nights that they were just up working during their vacation and whatnot, trying to get to where we are today. We're not there yet, so I still need council support and also community support to get us to finish line. But we're all that close. So that said, this is a study session to understand the housing element. I understand that we have already polled council for a special meeting in May, mid-May, for the final adoption meeting on the housing element topic. I understand that time might be a little rushed today, but we are here to answer all of your questions. And you will get a chance to talk about it in May at length. And that will be the only item on that agenda because we really do want to have a certified housing element sooner rather than later. So that said, I'll turn the presentation to either Luke or Pew to kick us off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening. It's really nice to be here, especially with the letter we got last week. We just want to go through and have, Pew and I will be going through the housing element update in a study session format that's really similar to what we did last July, which I think was really effective in terms of getting us focused with the direction we got at that meeting and then preparing what was our second draft housing element we submitted to HCD in October, just six months ago. So tonight, there's not going to be any action asked of the city council. I think as the city manager had said, we're shooting to come back on May 14th for adoption. And we are still working pretty hard right now to get our zoning adopted or our zoning in place so we can take that forward as well. I think one thing that's good news is we got the letter saying we're in compliance with state housing law. But we also do have to rezone properties, which was indicated in the letter, for this to really be formalized since we're over a year late from the January 31, 2023 deadline. So tonight, this is going to be a kind of high-level discussion again, where we know we're going to get into much more detail as we go to the planning commission on April 29, and then to the council on May 14. So with that, I think we can move on to the next slide. Okay, so tonight, some of this is going to seem awfully familiar to the people who have been tracking this project and most of the council members, but I think it is worth going over the background of housing element as a whole and how we got here, and then taking us to the current status. As we'd said, and I think everybody knows, last Wednesday, we received a letter from HCD, which is what we were hoping for, but we're far from certain we were going to get. So that kind of changed. We had had this meeting on the agenda, and it sort of changed our perspective from this being a hypothetical discussion to something where we know we're in compliance at this point. We do want to go back through our regional housing needs allocation, our priority sites, again, how we got here, where we stand currently with those, since that's a major aspect of the housing element. And again, at a very high level, be talking about policies and strategies, some of those that have gathered the most public comment. We can get into those and address those here tonight. And of course, we will be including timeline and next steps in the project. So at the very basic level, in case there's somebody that, again, is new to this process, what is a housing element? It is one of the state mandated general plan elements. And your general plan is typically a long-term document, say 20 to 30 years. Housing elements, though, are required to be updated every eight years. So in many sense, they're the most current element of your general plan. If a general plan is sort of the blueprint for where a city is headed in terms of development, the housing element has that function for everything related to housing. Its development, its density, affordability, preservation, all of that is outlined in the housing element and essentially lays out the roadmap for how the city handles housing issues. Okay. What does it require? Public participation, and I think that's something that in the early stages of this project, we very much addressed. We've had over 30 public meetings in just about every format we could have, whether before the city council, planning commission, housing commission. In 2022, we had a strategic advisory committee, which I know two of the council members were on. I believe we had eight meetings that year. On that, we've had a number of community meetings as well in pretty much every format, in-person, hybrid, and virtual. So there have been a lot of public participation opportunities. I realize in the last six to nine months, though, there have been fewer meetings. Part of that was because we did quite a bit of that early on, and that was not something that we were getting feedback from HCD that we needed to work on additionally in order to get compliance with state law. I would say, too, on the drafts of the housing element, all of those, there have been three separate drafts. The last two have also had revisions. Each of those revisions also required a public comment period. So in whole, there have been five public comment periods on the various drafts of the housing element to date. Other aspects and what is required in a housing element. You have a housing needs analysis. You try to identify those areas where there is the greatest need in your community. Review of prior housing element policies and programs. I think the needs analysis and the review of the programs and policies from the prior element can feed into the next bullet of developing policies and programs to address your current city needs, the primary function of why you're doing a housing element. And lastly, of course, is the housing sites inventory, which we'll touch on tonight and which probably took the majority of meeting time on this process and getting here. I think as we all know, too, the last bullet, who reviews and certifies compliance with state law? That is California Housing Department of Community Development. Also, while the housing element is the driver for this project, there are related changes. And these will be items that will be coming back to the city council. There will be general plan amendments related to land use, transportation, and mobility. Could have specific plans, such as heart of the city, that would require amendments. And very key is rezoning. We're going to have zoning text changes. And obviously, the properties we're going to talk about tonight, as our housing priority sites, would need to be rezoned in order to finalize this process. State law also requires that the safety element be updated. And there are zoning amendments that are related to state law regarding emergency shelters that would also need to be folded into any code changes. Recently, too, the city council approved an amendment to Placeworks Contract, who is our consultant on this project, to develop the objective design standards. So that is something else that will be coming later in the year. It is not necessarily required, but given the changes to housing law in recent years, where there is a movement away from anything discretionary to something, to ministerial or objective standards, those design standards, I think, will be necessary for us to really have proper land use control over housing development in the future. So on the sixth cycle, which we are now into as of 2023, so we're a little over a year into the planning period. That's really what we're focused on now. Sixth cycle means this is the sixth time there has been a housing element update required by state law. The certification deadline passed last January 31. We submitted our first draft a few days after that. But that's why we're sort of in the position now where rezoning is required in order to get our housing element in full compliance. A while ago, I would say Cupertino was probably at the rear of the process in Santa Clara County out of all the jurisdictions. To date, though, we are now, in HCD's eyes, compliant once we're able to complete our rezoning and adopt our housing element. But there's still our six jurisdictions in the county that have not received a letter similar to what we got last week. So this is still a fairly common issue in California. Just to update, we have of the 109 ABAG jurisdictions, of which Cupertino is one, about 35% are still not certified. And in Southern California, where they started a full year ahead of us, you still have about 30% of the jurisdictions in non-compliance. So we've actually caught up and done pretty well on that front. This is just a kind of snapshot of the nine-county ABAG region that showed the housing needs. This was the RENA for the ABAG area. We have about 4,588 is our RENA. So we had a little over 1% of the ABAG total. The income categories are very low, low, moderate, and above moderate that are laid out there are pretty similar, as you can see on this next slide, almost mirror what Cupertino has. You can see the largest need categories are very low and above moderate. And a little over 56% of our housing need would be in an income restricted category, whether very low through moderate. At the bottom of this slide, just as a reminder, something we had discussed quite a bit in our earlier public meetings, is that while we have a RENA of 4,588, it is advisable, though not legally required, to have a buffer built into that in case there is any shortfall by income category on housing sites. That way, you have more sites to draw from in order to stay compliant. And the buffer would be recommended to be somewhere in the, like, the 25% to 35% range. We are over 30% right now, based on what we have in our current draft housing element. If all of our sites were to build out at the realistic capacity levels, that may be unlikely. But if they all were to, we would be somewhere around 6,200 units rather than 4,588. I wanted to include this slide pretty much as one of the struggles I think everybody had going through the cycle is there was so much that was new, and namely, that being the RENA number going up, in Cupertino's case, over four times compared to what the fifth cycle had. We had just a little over 1,000 units in the last housing cycle, and the city was able to accommodate that in just five housing sites. So what we've really looked at going through this process, not just Cupertino, but pretty much all of the developed areas in California, is having few, very few remaining undeveloped sites puts you in a reliance on redevelopment. And largely, those are commercial centers that may be underperforming or are underutilized, since redeveloping sites that are already housing people requires relocation and adds another level of complexity. So this was one challenge Cupertino and other cities faced. On the third bullet down, I think you can see as well that in the previous cycle, we were able to accomplish meeting our RENA through five sites. This time, we're looking at 62 individual parcels. It comes down to about 36 development sites, because many of these parcels are adjacent and could develop as one site. Some are freestanding, but many are two or more parcels. Another big change to, due to the higher number of housing units overall, is that 70% of the properties we're looking at would have a 50-unit acre or minimum, 50-acre minimum or more through redevelopment. Only three of our sites, I believe, are under 20 units per acre. So it's a big shift for what was largely a very suburban area. Our one zoning district is by far the most common throughout the city. So what we're really looking at is development that is not only more dense, but is in different locations, largely along busy corridors where that type of density is more appropriate. In addition to the sixth cycle, there were more requirements by HCD in terms of developing policies and programs. Quantifying things, putting dates on things, saying when you were going to get things done, being able to provide measurable results and benchmarks to get there. So that was very new compared to prior housing elements. There's a greater accountability to produce housing as well. I think housing elements, still, your number one objective is showing that you can accommodate your RENA. But where we're starting to go more now is holding cities accountable for not only providing or meeting that RENA through the housing sites, but being able to demonstrate whether through annual reporting or benchmarks in your housing element, that you're working towards getting that housing to actually come to fruition. So there's more of an active role and an expectation on the state's part that cities will be following through. There were requirements on site selection as well. We had acre limitations from half acre up to 10 acre. And I think HCD looked much more closely on how viable were sites going to redevelop within that time period. Less discretion on approving housing developments for many of the sites we're going to be looking at. If they include, say, 20% affordable or more, we're going to be looking at a ministerial approval process. So the traditional discretionary hearing, that's changing significantly where housing development is in place. The issue of affirmatively furthering fair housing, we had talked about a lot at earlier meetings. But again, that is a key component now of the housing element, running through site selection and your policy development. And certainly through this process, more outreach and inclusion was an expectation. And again, I think that was something that, while there have been quite a bit of public comments, I know there are people who still would like to have meetings going on this. That was something that I feel we did a very good job on early on and actually included quite a few comments from the public. Hopefully, this slide's not going to be relevant, but I wanted to include it just because the question gets asked. We know we are compliant now based on the letter that we received. We know we are compliant now based on the letter that we received last week, but what can happen if a housing element is not certified? The first bullet's probably been the most in the press and most discussed, builders remedy projects. We did receive one, we get inquiries on those, but I think Cupertino's had far fewer than some other cities in the county. But so long as you're non-compliant, the builders remedy remains something that's a reality. You know, projects can come in that are not consistent with land use and zoning controls. And being non-compliant will enable that to continue. Lawsuit and attorney fees is also something else that the city experienced shortly after we missed the deadline in January thirty-one last year. And as we recently settled that in January of this year. But again, that would remain in a reality if you were non-compliant. Also things like ineligible, ineligibility for grant funding, other financial penalties and streamlined ministerial approval of projects. Ultimately for cities that don't comply, you could find yourself where you would have a court receivership appointing an agent to essentially bring your housing element into compliance. But again, I don't think any of this is as relevant as it may have seemed a year or so ago to us. Affirmatively furthering fair housing, again, I just wanted to touch on that. You know, this is something that is really become a hallmark of what HCD is expecting through the housing element update process. And you know, it's really looking at trying to provide housing opportunities for people or special need groups that face more challenges towards securing housing or may not even be able to live within a community in their area. And since Cupertino is either a high or highest resource uniformly, as are many of the cities on the west side of Santa Clara County, essentially providing housing anywhere is, is furthering affirmatively fair housing goals from a regional perspective. So what Cupertino is, was sort of tasked with in this by being a high resource area was to accommodate persons who may not currently reside here. We had to look at this issue from a more regional perspective than say a city like San Jose that is not as uniform across the board, may not have had to do. And I think one thing to note too, is that by complying with meeting arena, which certainly we can demonstrate, we, we have the capacity to add beyond arena. That does not necessarily equate that we're satisfying AFFH just by doing that. So one of our strategies, HE one-three-six, which we will be talking about later, a missing middle strategy. This is one of the reasons we're including things like that. It does not necessarily address our arena, but it does address fair housing issues. We included this complicated slide mostly just to show that we have had a lot of meetings and to show the progress of where we're at. On the left under twenty-twenty-one, it shows that the first meeting was a study session that happened about three years ago in April of twenty-twenty-one. In twenty-twenty-two, I believe mostly what you get on this is that we had twenty-three public meetings, received a lot of input in those meetings. We're, we're able to get our initial recommendation on site selection. And by the beginning of twenty-twenty-three, we're in a position to submit the first draft to HCD. The first draft was kind of rough and in many ways more of an outline, but we were able to get that in at the beginning of February shortly after the original compliance date had passed. In twenty-twenty-three, again, we received feedback in May from HCD on our first draft. And as we went into July, like I said, we had a study session before the city council where we were able to get direction from you on ways we could proceed that would probably most expeditiously get us to this point of having a compliance letter. So we'll be touching on that, but yeah, we were able to get our second draft in, in mid-October, which was a substantial improvement. We received comments just before the holidays from HCD. That letter was much shorter, much more focused, and I think told us we were on the right track. We had continued to meet with and, and work with HCD and we're optimistic again, but we were still pleasantly surprised to find out last week we were in compliance. To kind of revisit where we were before we submitted to HCD, we spent the majority of our meeting time focusing on site selection. And in twenty-twenty-two, that was again, the dominant topic. Where we started was essentially looking at all sites in the city that made, met HCD's area criteria of half acre to ten acres. And reached out literally to every property owner to see if they were interested in being included in our, in our housing element. And many of those, we had follow-ups to try to get sites that we thought would make good housing candidate sites. We obviously eliminated things per HCD guidance related to hazards, whether geologic or other environmental impacts. Throughout the initial meetings, I think the things that emerged in terms of housing and its location was essentially dispersing it throughout the city, not really consolidating it in any one area. There was less interest, I think, because we had several large projects, namely Valco and the Hamptons that were east that to try to look at other sites that would be in the south or west portions of the city. And I think also declining school enrollment was a topic that both planning commission and council was looking to see if there was a way to offset that through having housing element sites through their location could counteract that. Another issue in our early meetings, we had had some residential properties on the list. Those were dropped because of relocation impacts to residents. So we're, what we have today is again largely commercial sites, not those that would be displacing any large residential population. This map may not be terribly helpful, but it does show the full city limits. And this is essentially where we were at the end of August per council recommendation. The sites, excuse me, the sites shown in yellow were what we called at that time tier one properties. They were really the housing priority sites. There were tier two properties shown in orange that were essentially backup that could be included if we weren't going to be able to meet arena. And the green properties, you can see Valco and the Hamptons up in the upper right-hand corner. Those were pipeline projects that had already been approved. Following that and getting to when we actually submitted to HCD and had gotten some feedback, we wanted to look at, knowing that not all of the sites the council had recommended in August were going to meet HCD criteria, or if they did, we may not get credit for all of the units such as at Valco. So we can look back at what would be policy frameworks for the additional housing site locations. And what we focused on were things like Assembly Bill thirty-two and SB three-seventy-five from now over a decade ago that started tying transportation and land use and putting more dense development along transportation corridors. This was reflected, reflected in Plan Bay Area twenty-fifty and the Bay Area Regional, Regional Transportation Plan. At the time, we had the study session, I think it was July twenty-five last year. Assembly Bill two-zero-one-one had just gone into effect a few weeks before. And what that bill essentially does without getting into the details is if you have commercially zoned properties, so especially along major corridors like Deans and Stevens Creek, you as a property owner are able to submit for a housing project without rezoning. You would have to come in under the specifics of the bill that requires a minimum density, generally forty or sixty units per acre. But again, you could do this without rezoning your property and being exempt from CQ. So knowing that was in effect, we then tried to incorporate that into a strategy to include new sites. This map here shows all of the blue areas are properties that could develop as housing sites under AB twenty-eleven and that also meet HCD's size criteria. So what you see is pretty much along Stevens Creek from Stelling going towards eastward towards the city, city limit line. Stevens Creek is almost uniformly subject to AB twenty-eleven. And a similar portion of Deans Boulevard just to the south and north of it, it is also largely subject to AB twenty-eleven. So we did try to concentrate on sites like that as we added them going forward. So again, with council direction in July twenty-twenty-three, we then looked at how do we accommodate the arena based on HCD's comments and accommodate the deficiency we realized we were going to have, focusing on sites that could already become housing. Oh, that's, that's okay. It's fine. So what we have here is the much simpler map. Not all property lines are shown, but this is essentially what we have in our housing element today. These are our housing priority sites. So unlike the previous slide that showed Stevens Creek fairly uniformly potential housing, these are the sites we have selected. So largely these are AB twenty-eleven sites already. But these are mostly sites too, where we have either owner interest or very strong indication that these can redevelop by twenty-thirty-one. So there still is a fair dispersal of sites, but again, most of what we're looking at are higher density properties along major transportation corridors. We have the kind of the one property far to the left. Can't point it out, but it's really the only one over there, which is off Linda Vista referred to as the Evolich site, which is four lots. That's really about the only one on the extreme west that would be coming in. And that would be looking at more of a townhome density of say twenty units per acre. So we're just going to touch at again, a very high level of goals, policies and programs. I don't know if, how many of you have had a chance to really get into the housing element itself. There's quite a bit of information there. But we've tried to break down the categories of what our programs and policies are trying to address, which are really required per HCD guidance. So we're going to have programs to provide adequate housing sites and also to assist lower income housing development. Now the ways we would do this and a lot of this, this is again, a very high overview, but if you read the policies, it's going to be the city taking more active role, looking at supporting grant applications to achieve these goals, to be able to provide technical support to developers or, or have housing advocacy groups, to issue notice of financial availability for BMR and affordable housing funds. In terms of constraints, we're going to be looking at doing things to adopt objective standards that are clear. Things that make, you know, the development process clearer and are essentially necessary at this point anyway. We're looking at things like fee waivers for affordable units and particularly where we'd have a hundred percent affordable housing projects. Other ways we could look at evaluating and eliminating constraints would be to revisit our parking standards for housing. Programs to conserve, improve and expand the city housing stock. Again, requiring a replacement of at least as many units on a site if it should redevelopment, so you're not creating a housing deficit. Disallowing conversion of multifamily units to single family, same principle. And looking at the use of CDB, CDBG funds for conservation and other improvements to existing housing stock. On the area of AFFH, we're looking at upzoning sites to adequately meet arena. Obviously it's a basic of the housing element. Looking at things like supporting teacher housing or workforce housing projects and also extremely low income projects, which is always a very tough income category to, to satisfy. And also looking to continue to support the development of ADUs, which again are a missing middle housing category and to develop specific missing middle howling policies. And by that, we essentially mean things that are not necessarily very high density, but could be smaller, more affordable by design units, things like triplexes, fourplexes, duplexes. Smaller, smaller footprint housing that may tend to be more rental, particularly in owner occupied areas. So housing element strategy one-three-six, which is really targeting missing middle. What we're looking at doing with that, and this has probably gotten the most comment in the recent rounds of the housing element, is for R one, R one areas, which are dispersed throughout the city, corner lots would be able to have the option to develop things such as duplexes, triplexes and up to four units using R two standards. R two is essentially a duplex zoning district, which allows also two ADUs. So currently all R one and our four lots, you can get four units through the ADU process. What we're trying to do with this is facilitate housing types in single family neighborhoods, mostly as a fair housing issue, not to meet the arena, but to, to provide housing typologies that would be more affordable by nature. Other areas we're looking at is preserving at-risk units and trying to be more proactive in meeting with housing operators on at least an annual basis to do so. ADUs and second units, I think the, the city council has recently just adopted, you know, our, an ordinance amendment where we have now have the potential to have three ADUs in addition on R one properties and two on R two properties. I think we're going to continue to do all we can to promote ADUs on our website, whether that's through pre-approved models or just to continue to call out the awareness that this is again, a really good missing middle strategy that HCD is very supportive of and something that a lot of homeowners can get benefits from, from having on their property. And just to wrap up here at the end, we wanted to go through our HCD review process. Again, we had submitted on February two thousand twenty-three, three months later, we got our first comments back. We got, I think it was a sixteen-page letter, which is never good, the longer the more you know you're in trouble. But was not terribly a surprise because we knew we had some holes and incompleteness with that first draft. So, but getting the comments did help us to focus. We knew we were going to need to provide analysis in, in several areas in order to get a compliant housing element. We did receive some copies, some comments that did not necessarily apply to the city. And we, that was where we did get some feedback too, on our sites inventory related to the pipeline and that not all of our pipeline projects were, those units were necessarily going to be counted within this planning period. We submitted our second draft in the middle of October and revised that, I believe, at the end of November. In the December letter we received from HCD, we got far fewer comments. They were more specific, more focused in nature. We still were being asked to provide additional analysis in several areas. Some of those were on sites where we did not have specific owner interest to justify why those sites were going to be good candidates for redevelopment by twenty-thirty-one. And, but largely at this point in time, we were pretty secure with what we could count as pipeline units. A lot of why we were able to get the letter we did last week was through informal discussions with HCD. I think over the last six to nine months, we developed, I think, a fairly strong relationship with them. And this knocked considerable time off the process rather than just going through the formal letter policy where you have a couple of months between communication. Their most recent comments to us just prior to getting our letter was we knew we needed to strengthen the missing middle policies. So I know we had questions from the public about why are we doing this if it's not necessary to meet arena? Well, it's very much a fair housing issue like I touched on. By far, the majority of land in Cupertino is zoned R one. And by trying to create housing opportunities that are more affordable within that zoning district, it's one way to really address fair housing issues, given, given the way Cupertino's land use is laid out. We were also asked to provide additional site analysis. We're essentially using things like the improvement to land value where that's looking at if you have sites that really don't have improvements that are in good shape, they're underdeveloped, underutilized, high vacancies. That indicates a site that whether there's owner interest or not, that may be a good candidate for redevelopment. So we did provide that analysis, which is reflected in appendix B four of the housing element. We also had discussions about continuing to streamline and promote the development of ADUs, which I think it was very helpful that this council had just at that time done that. So we were in a good position to demonstrate that had already been met. And again, we were reminded and you'll see it throughout the housing element itself is to take a more proactive approach to ensure housing is being produced. Again, I think that's, that's a big change from prior housing elements where cities were essentially off the hook at just showing they could accommodate housing. Now it's really something where you're in an agreement that you're reporting on regularly and need to demonstrate you're meeting what you said you would do. I just wanted to include this because this was sort of one unanticipated wrinkle from a year ago is that through the lawsuit that was submitted in February, we reached a stipulated judgment in January. And probably the key thing that changed with that is that the process went from one where we had been expecting to do an environmental impact report. We had even had a scoping meeting April eighteenth of last year, assuming we would be doing that. But under state law, as part of the stipulated judgment, that shifted to doing something that is called an environmental assessment, which looks almost identical to a draft EIR, but does, will not have the forty-five day public comment period that you would typically have where you would circulate a draft EIR and receive public comments and then prepare a response to those comments and then have a final EIR that would be adopted. And receive public comments and then prepare a response to those comments and then have a final EIR that would be adopted. So in many ways, we have a document that will look like an EIR, but it is not an EIR. In any event, this was required by state law. It was not something that was decided as an alternative to do in lieu of an EIR. And going forward, as we have housing projects come in, we will be looking at any sequo issues on them independently, knowing that we have this information, which will become part of the city's general plan. So the remaining timeline and next steps, we are on April 2024. We have received our letter saying that we are in compliance. Once we rezone, that will be finalized. We are planning to have a housing commission study session on April 25th. Followed by a planning commission meeting where we would be looking for a recommendation, which is required before it comes back to city council. Council date of May 14th would follow that. We are still, like I said, working on rezoning as well. I am trying to remain optimistic that we will have all of that package and be able to take everything in one action. Though I'm not certain of that, we certainly can bring the adoption forward in May. Assuming that happened, there would be a second reading in June. And then we would commence on working on our objective design standards. Which we would try to get done by the fall, certainly by the end of the year, no later than that. And by, I believe, April 1 of next year, we would be submitting our first annual report to HCD. We also have a number of objectives and dates in our policies in our housing element, some of which are coming up in a year, some of which are further out. So there will be needless to say, a lot of reporting that will be going forward on our progress. On policy compliance and meeting arena as we go forward on this. And with that, since there's nothing on that slide, I think I'm done talking for a little while. So I realize that was a high level, but again, we'll be coming back with a lot more detail short term. So happy to answer any questions that anybody may have this evening.
Thank you very much, Luke. That was a very comprehensive view. Thank you to you too. And what a wonderful accomplishment. Let's bring it back to council and we can ask questions of staff or clarification or technical education. We have Councilmember Moore.
Thank you for an extremely clear report. And I know you summarized a lot of information. You did an excellent job at it. I know you've been working on this for years now to get it to this point. So I'm curious about the government code 65759 use on this particular project. So I heard you say that we will be looking at secret issues independently for, for projects moving forward. I was wondering what the environmental assessment timeline is looking like. When we're, there is kind of a cutoff for that.
Yeah, I think the goal is to have that come back on May 14th as well. The, May 14th, we're looking at essentially every action that would be necessary, not just the rezoning to bring that back to the city council. So I mean, I think we had talked to is there, there are differences as while this looks like an EIR, we had initially planned on doing what would have been a subsequent program EIR. Which is something that subsequently projects would be tearing off of that. The environmental assessment, I think, is a more of a gray area of what it is. Again, if you were to look at it, it looks very much like a draft EIR. It's almost indistinguishable. But it does not have exactly the same status as that. So given that, as we have housing sites come in that are, that are priority housing sites, we are going to be looking at the specifics of that project. Many of them will likely qualify for exemptions that already exist, like an infill exemption. Because they'll be compliant with zoning, they'll be compliant with the general plan. So as long as they have utilities and don't exceed five acres, they would be eligible for an infill exemption on that basis. But again, I just want to emphasize, we will be looking at each project as it comes in. By designating them priority housing sites to any that are 20% or more affordable, they'll be required to have a ministerial approval through HCD guidelines and state law. So I think by virtue of being a priority housing site, the city is making a commitment to have housing developed on those properties consistent with zoning and general plan designation.
Okay, so I'm going to try to butt in a little bit here so I don't run out of time. Would you happen to recall how many units were accepted at Valco?
I believe 1779.
Okay.
Yeah. It actually, I think when we met in July, we were saying 15 to 1600. The number went up. Because their project was modified and the total number of units went up.
Okay, so we're not being, we're not having about 1,000 units counted. Does that sound about right?
About 900.
Roughly.
Correct, yeah.
Roughly 900 units won't count.
And again, I think it's just based on it's, it's the realistic development potential in seven years, given the large scale of the project. It's not saying that that won't develop, it's will develop in that timeframe. So smaller project is more realistic to develop by 2031. Than something that's likely to be phased over a longer period.
Okay, thank you. And I was wondering if the environmental assessment will also include the project construction and operational air quality emissions like we saw for the, the Valco specific plan. And the reason I bring that up and I did copy all this, this out to look at, was that they exceeded the NOx for construction and then at operational, this is just this one project. At operational, they had exceedance on rogues, NOx and PM10. And then when you look at their, their cancer risk, they were over the backmed single source threshold of 10. So my concern is that if they're exceeding that with this one project and that was at 20, 28, 2900 units, we're looking across the whole city. Will our EA include this air, same air quality measurements for the entire project?
Yeah, you're essentially going to get a program level analysis with greenhouse gas, air quality, all of the resource areas that you would have seen itemized on an initial study and in an EIR. Are going to be in the environmental assessment.
Before, before we lose time, will they also be looking at all the cities around us who are expecting, anticipating this growth?
Cumulatively, I don't believe we have that in there is obviously too, all of the cities surrounding you have high arenas as well. So, but we are not looking at like a regional county wide that type of an impact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So you want to go first?
Five minutes.
Okay, yes. So I have a few questions. So when you said minimum density. So if I am on a high priority property and the minimum is 50 per acre. We won't be able to build 20 per acre, per se.
That is correct. Once, once these are established and they are now the new zoning or the new general plan designation, you would have to meet the minimum of that range.
And how about maximum?
There's a maximum. So when we were bringing this back to you, for instance, our general plan designations for the higher density sites will cover 50 to 65 and some sites 65 to 80. And those sites would be zoned R4, which we can definitely get into at that time, but yes, properties coming in, if they're in a 50 to 65 would be expected to develop at a minimum 50.
Okay, but maximum 65.
65, but then of course, if they were to have a density bonus or something like that, yeah.
That's my next question.
It could go up from there.
Right, so it's still 15% low income, but if they do more, that they would get density bonus waivers and, and all the
Correct. That's state law, that has not changed.
Okay, understood. So I'm going to reserve my time for 3:48.
Okay. Councilmember Child.
Okay, oh. So in the next meeting in mid-May, we will adopt likely the housing element and also the zoning ordinance?
The housing element for sure, and hopefully the zoning ordinance, because that's still being worked on.
Because that's required to be compliant.
Correct. Until the, until the rezoning of the priority housing sites has occurred, it would not be compliant.
Yeah. And then the zoning ordinance would include building heights setbacks or those or not? Or that would be design standards to come later?
That would be included. Building heights, setbacks, development standards like that would be included in the zoning ordinance. So which we, which are typically included today. What, what's largely new is you would have an R4 zoning district.
Yeah.
Which does not exist, which would be tailored to the higher density.
This is why I have requested to have a study session before the adoption. Because I think zoning is a pretty complex issue. And I hope that we have time for that. And then I sent in a list of questions yesterday by 10 o'clock, but then they were not answered. So now I am asked, I have to answer, ask them today, but my list of questions are 15, so I'm picking a few of them. So this is quotes from the housing element. I won't repeat that. My question from that reading is every non-vacant priorities housing element site identified in this sixth element cycle cannot be used to count towards the next one in, in the seventh housing element cycle according to that rule. So does that mean we identify more than necessary? We'll have less sites to use for next time if they are not built? Right? Therefore, my question is, what we have right now is actually over 35%. Not over 30, it's 35.7%, 0.7%. But the recommended buffer is 25 to 35. So I wonder if we, I see that some of the sites have no owner interest. So if we take out some of the sites and then in with 30%, that's 59, 64 units. If we do that adjustment now, would that affect our compliance?
If we were to alter the housing element in any way, other than maybe correcting errors in the tables or cleaning up text? Yeah, our letter would essentially be not
So it would have been nice if we had this meeting a month earlier, then we would have a chance to provide input, but the council never had the chance, unfortunately. And we are right now identifying more than necessary and which means if some of these sites without owner interest were not developed in the next eight years, we cannot even use them for our capacity for the next cycle.
I don't think that's true.
So that's not true? Okay, that's good to know. Then next question is, this part again is quote from the housing element, so I won't repeat that. My question is for residential sites, we learned from past projects that realistic capacity is 80 to 100%. We estimate 95 realistic capacity. Makes sense. For mixed use site, we find out in past project is 83 to 344% and mostly it's 113%. But we only estimate at 75% for realistic capacity. As a result, we are identifying more sites than necessary. So why are we using a realistic capacity much lower than even the past project?
Well, I think part of realistic capacity is something we work with HCD on. And mixed use sites have a lower realistic capacity because they're not 100% residential. Which is why the residential sites have a 95% realistic capacity and the mixed use sites are lower at 75%. I think the city has done a great job in the past of showing that they exceed capacity often, often going over even 100%. But what HCD is looking for is what is realistic in their eyes. And what is realistic to them was 75% for mixed use sites.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the zoning changes. And if we approve them in May, then is there other time limits? Do we do the zoning changes have to be made within a certain time? Because I was thinking of the Portola Valley example where they revoked the, the housing element.
We have, per the stipulated judgment, 120 days to adopt the zoning after adoption of the housing element. So there, there is that window. I would suggest we do it as soon as we can to get the compliance issue behind us and essentially things like builder's remedy, once we're fully compliant are not going to be an issue anymore. It's, right now largely, it's just a matter of getting the zoning work finalized. And I think that is, you know, something else we want to be sure of what we are adopting. So we don't end up in a position, say like other cities that may have adopted their housing element. But then their zoning was not accurately implementing that and that raises another issue. So would want to be sure that we're getting our zoning right because so much hinges on, on that being in place and being able to implement the housing element. But yes, we, we do have, we do have time for post-adoption of the housing element. But it would be nicer to do them ideally at the same time or as close together as possible.
So you're saying it's 120 days from, from the final approval?
From adoption of the housing element. So let's say you were to adopt the housing element on May 14. You would have 120 days
From then.
in order to, to rezon the sites. Which I don't think will be necessary. We can do it sooner than that. But you know, realistically, in, in HCD's eyes, until the rezoning is in place, we are not fully compliant with state housing law.
Right. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Frun.
So I'll start with saying thank you. This has been a long and really difficult process and I want to personally thank you both for being so open with council about our own concerns and getting us to this point. Yesterday, I, I was able to get on calendar with our reviewer and with Melinda Coy from HCD. Who is his supervisor in order to get a little bit of clarity that I wanted in addition is to sort of what the rest of this process forward is. And I did ask him at one point, you know, if you were here and you were able to tell my council anything today, what would it be? And it was simply, don't change anything unless you want to be more ambitious. This draft element in its current state is a floor and not a ceiling. So I do want to remind everyone of that. If there are things that we would like to, to be a little bit more ambitious about, that's still an open door. But going anything below where we are right now is really a non-starter and would put us back where we were last year. And that's not really a place we want to be. One of the things that, that came up in that conversation involved the Housing Element Strategy 1-3-6, the one that got so much attention. And in particular, because now that it points to R2 zoning standards instead of R3 zoning standards. R2 is very restrictive. There was some concern there that we would perhaps need to revisit R2 zoning standards in order to make that work. Is that something that you think we should do? And if so, in what timeframe?
Yes, I think it is something we should do. I don't know if that's something we can accomplish by May 14. But since we are referencing the R2 standards to get what is a key policy or a key strategy in place. I think we do need to look at that to make sure it's doing what we want. I, I know there are things such as site coverage, I believe is 40%. That could be a limiting factor if you're trying to build, even if they're 1,000 square foot per unit. If you have four units, 40% coverage could be a limitation. Even on 8,000 square foot lot, that's 50. So yes, there are things like that we need to look at. If that were not part of the initial zoning package, I think we could follow up on that. I also think through our objective design standards, we're going to be looking at a lot of ways, which I can't answer tonight, that we're going to be able to get the development types we're looking for. And this strategy is admittedly very new territory. You know, we're trying to do things in single family, in a single family R1 district. Which since I didn't say it earlier, I know there'll be people out there, we are not rezoning any of these properties. They just have the flexibility to use R2 They just have the flexibility to use R two standards to do multiple units, no more than four on their property. So but admittedly, I think with corner lots and those adjacent to commercial corridors too, I think we're looking at about sixteen hundred plus lots. Total. So I know there had been a request from the public to list all those, but I don't think listing sixteen hundred properties tonight would have been very helpful to show. Corner lots are throughout the city. There's a lot of them.
Do you think that that analysis would also include parking standards? Would it be part of a standalone analysis or would it be part of a separate discussion of parking?
That's difficult to say now. I know parking is something certainly in terms of residential development, we need to look at as a potential constraint. It's very often waved through density bonus on multifamily, but it is something I think we should look at adjusting, you know, more realistically. And certainly in terms of this, like with ADUs, you know, the state has pushed people to reconsider parking on that. The reason we really drafted strategy HE one three six was because we knew we already had the potential to do four units per lot. And this seemed to be a way to, you know, without overwhelming or undermining single family neighborhoods, to get those additional units with housing types that would be compatible. I mean, I know I was thinking just corner lots, you go into older neighborhoods, they typically had larger homes. And had smaller homes mid block and those were often the units that were first converted to multifamily housing. So this is kind of a development type that's not really new. It just hasn't been done in a suburban setting in a while.
Got it. And then just very quickly, one of the other things that came up was that, you know, the city of Sunnyvale had gone through everything, had adopted, rezoned, et cetera, and then discovered, oh gee, we made some mistakes. So there was a notion that perhaps we should do informal outreach to HCD before we actually consider the zoning code amendments. Is that something that you feel your position to do?
Yes, and we've actually talked with our consultant about doing just that. So again, we don't want to be in that position where we feel we have compliance and then we find out we need to come back and fix the zoning ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, where you have about a little more than two minutes. Two point five.
I think I have three minutes forty eight seconds, but that's okay. I'll take your time. Oh, I used three minutes forty eight. You're right, you're right. Okay. Okay, so my two question is on the twenty five percent to thirty five percent, you know, over the the doesn't what we need. If we have sticked to the lowest twenty five percent, you think that would have jeopardized our, you know, intention or approval? Because councilmember shall question that, why don't we just stick to twenty five percent? Why do we go to thirty percent? We went to thirty five. Do you think that has anything to do with, you know, showing our willingness to really work on this?
I'll take that question from Luke, seeing the hesitation on his face. If we were in a guessing industry, we would have been wrong. I mean, Luke promised me that we would have been done by December and he was wrong. So I I wouldn't necessarily go there.
Okay, so our staff did everything right to get where we're at. Believe me, I got a lot of congratulation texts from my neighbor councilmembers and saying that, how did you do it? I said, we have great staff. My second question is about a corner lot with four units. That has caused a lot of questions and not satisfactory answers from residents. But four units, if they were to use the SB nine, they could build actually four units easily, right? And with, also with ADUs. And so can they still use density bonus with four units?
Four units does not get you into the density bonus. You would have to have five or more. So again, that, as written, that strategy should not result in anything that's incompatible with an R one neighborhood. It's four units, which is really through the ADU ordinance, something they can do today. Whether they're corner lots or mid block. So there's that potential exists right now.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, the four units still belong to one owner. Can they subdivide into four lots and sell it so that, you know, people who don't have that much income can buy into Cupertino? Or is it still one lot that one owner owns the four units?
Right now it's one lot.
Is there any way the council can make it happen or what would be the options?
To create more lots or to
Do, to subdivide. So not subdivide, so they can sell individually to four owners instead of being one owner that owns the four units. What's the process?
It would require adoption by the city council to enable that. I believe there's legislation that does that, but it's not required. You'd have to opt in to do that. And that's, I know, not something that we currently have right now.
Okay, so that would be an option the council can consider later on?
It certainly could be, sure. It would require council action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, the public to make any comments if they do. And just a reminder, we have another study session on the housing element on May fifteenth and May fourteenth. So all the questions that you have don't have to be asked today. You will get another opportunity a couple of weeks from now. Having said that, if you have any comments, please go ahead. Madam City Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, Mayor, I have three speaker cards requesting to speak in Community Hall and I see one hand raised virtually.
Okay, great. Three minutes for each speaker, please.
Okay, first we have Greg Endem, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Greg.
Mayor Mohan, council members. My name is Greg Endem. I represent the Marina Plaza Shopping Center. As you may recall, in December twenty twenty two, the commission, plan commission and council approved a project for us mixed use of two hundred and six units, condo units. As we went through the development process with the plan commission and also with the city council, both groups raised the issue that they would really like to see more density on the site. And so over time, we had somewhat of a pause with the development headwinds of high interest rates and construction cost. Our ownership studied that option and we very much would like to move forward with an option that would bring you a project basically of the same footprint, but with three hundred units. We've made a request through staff a year ago and we just reiterated that in the letter, which I copied all of you on, asking that the zoning on the property be changed from the twenty five units per acre and some density bonus, which you're allowed, up to a sixty units per acre that would give us the right and the option to do the three hundred units. And so I'm just here tonight to reiterate that request. We would really very much like to partner with the city and staff to work towards that density opportunity. And we would hope that in your housing element, that you could include that rezoning of the property because we're ready now to move forward as soon as the zoning allows with an application for that three hundred unit project. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Next we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I am a grown woman. I bought my house. I worked hard. Nobody cared what happened to me in the nineties or eighties. Now we have a complete sellout of the state. HCD is absolutely out of control. It has been shown repeatedly that the Rena numbers are a complete scam. I mean, if we want to go down that Alice in Wonderland rabbit hole, HCD is a wagon that the horses have run away. Their cart is falling apart, their wheels are breaking. And yet they're still merrily going along accusing the people that live in this city of not caring about anyone. I am tired of being pointed at and yelled at and screamed at and hated because I live in my city. It is my choice to live in this city. And nobody gave a darn or a hang when I was paying sixty percent of my income to buy my house. That's my choice. But all I hear now is, oh, I have to pay twenty five percent of my income to buy something. Well, I'm sorry. That's not good enough. The rest of us did our time and you can drag our name through the mud. But I live here and this is not acceptable. I can tell you right now, if the thirteen colonies were sitting here, we'd already be fighting England. This is the worst takeout takeover of this state I have ever seen. This has been going on nine years. It has wasted our, my time, my city's money. I, you know, I hate, these people have done a wonderful job. I have been in jobs where in computer stuff, we worked on stuff for two years and then it was completely thrown out. HCD is an example of a state entity that is not being controlled or restrained. And you know, if one more person does the affirmative fair housing thing on me, I'm gonna throw up. Okay, we did our time and we are entitled to live in our city without being harassed or name called. The Rena numbers are long. I belong to three groups right now, plus the initiative, and I donate to them regularly. I do, this has changed everyone who I vote for and it's changed me forever. And I don't want my neighborhood taken over by some horrible group by HCD. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm here to commend the consultants and staff for getting approval from the state housing and community development for the city's six cycle housing element. It's been quite a long journey. I think I've attended all of the sessions which started in twenty twenty one. That was three years ago. The city manager and staff turnover took its toll. But congratulations to those who stayed the course. This is a major accomplishment. Thank you for your effort and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. And Mayor, we now have three hands raised virtually. We have Sam R, Rhoda Frye and Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I would like to express my appreciation for the work done by Luke Connolly and Pio Gosh. I've had the chance to attend several of the community meetings on the housing element. And I had a chance to watch them firsthand deal with uninformed residents coming in and really venting on them, which is really not something we should be doing on staff. And I've seen them very admirably handle those situations. We should all recognize that the situation is out of our control. It is coming from the state. And so let us work efficiently with staff that understand the dynamics at play and make sure that we can get through this as smoothly as possible. And trust in the integrity and professionalism of Luke and Pio and their department to get us through this. So I do want to appreciate all the work that has gone into this and the behind the scenes effort that it takes to get to this point. So thank you for that. Having said that, I do want to, as we move forward, look at we've got these identified housing element sites. And those sites account for the Rena numbers that we have. I'd like to ask why we then need the R one to R two zoning change for corner units and single family lots that are behind and adjacent to the retail lots. I think that poses a number of concerns. For instance, we have streets like Schoffer Drive that was in the news most recently for a SP three thirty application. If you walk on Schoffer Drive, you will see that there's absolutely no space there to walk. There's no sidewalks, there's no parking, and it is the path into a six hundred student school, which is far here. And so we're very concerned about this provision that was in the housing element to allow for R two zoning in lots that are corner units and behind retail sites. And I'd like to see if we can find a way to work our way out of that. I'm also alarmed to hear councilmember Frun or Vice Mayor Frun talk about this as a minimum and not a maximum. I understand the constituents that he represents. However, I just want to remind all of our council members that, you know, we have a diverse population and the average, the average resident in this neighborhood is looking for quality of life when they move to Cupertino. They're not looking for the highest density they can get in Cupertino. That's not why we moved to Cupertino. So please, please keep all of your constituents in mind. And looking forward to seeing this progress through the zoning changes. And I also want to ask if you can keep parking in mind because parking is essential. We don't want to lose parking and create a mess in Cupertino. If you turn Cupertino into one of the other cities that have all of those problems, what makes us different? Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Rhoda. Rhoda, you are unmuted, so you should be able to speak.
Yes, I can, especially if I turn the mute off my microphone. So I double muted myself. Sorry about that. So I wanted to reiterate a comment made by Mr. Connolly earlier. Recently, we did have fewer meetings and I was very disappointed by some of the late surprises that we had in the housing element. Nevertheless, it is a relief to get it done. I've got a couple of asks moving forward. One of them with respect to Councilmember Moore's question regarding SEQA. Yeah, I'm concerned about how are we going, how are developers going to tear off environmental impact report when we don't have, where there's no SEQA requirement? If they have a SEQA requirement, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, to create a environmental impact report in EIR, how can they, how can a developer possibly tear off something that doesn't exist? So I'm hoping that we can drill down on that further at a future meeting. The other thing that I've been thinking about is I, at least in the past, the city did have somebody who helped us with legislation and possibly lobbying. I think that it is crazy that all of the states in California are working on a housing element at the same time. So every eight years, this thing is due. We have a hard time getting consultants for doing these projects. In fact, I went to line the cities organization to which Cupertino belongs. And Rick Berman, Assembly Member Rick Berman, was talking about that, how, you know, it's getting really tough to do these. So my suggestion would be is that we, that the states start having one eighth of the state have their, have their housing elements do so that it's all rolling and we don't, we don't wind up having bottleneck all over the place. And if we can get this, maybe Cupertino can work with the local cities association and work with our local legislatures, then we will not be stuck with this in eight years from now because this has not been fun. And that's it. And excited, relieved that it's done. And thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Rhoda. And our final speaker is Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hi, and you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So hello from San Francisco. I'm up here taking care of my ninety three year old mom. So otherwise I'd be with you, not having fun. Number one, I want to say I really commend all the effort that the staff has made, the consultants and the council members that were supporting. that were supporting the housing element that would actually pass HCD. I want to really commend them for their presentation, but the work that they did in coming putting this housing element together. It's really a huge undertaking, and all the input that you had, so many meetings, so many different ways to get input from residents. And and anytime you put anything together, there's always going to be some people who are unhappy. We're a city of sixty thousand people. We need to get a housing element that the majority of people are happy with and that assists the HCD. A previous speaker said something which was I disagree with. He implied that the councilman JR Fruen somehow wanted the highest density for the city, and that is not what he said. What I heard council vice mayor JR Fruen say was that HCD had indicated that any changes to our housing element needed to be for more more density, not lower density, and that what we had, what our city had submitted on the housing element was really the baseline minimum that HCD would accept, and any changes better be on the higher. He was just quoting what passing along what HCD said, not that in any way he was pushing for the highest density possible, which I think is very misinformation by the previous speaker. He and and finally, I just want to to say that we need to move the process along. There's always going to be a little pieces that people are not completely happy with. But please, can we not put out misstatements that fuel people to be fearful of the highest density when this is not what this is about? So.
Thank you, Louise. That is your time.
Okay, that was the last one.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, okay. We should be wrapping this up. We we don't need a motion. We just have to receive the the staff report. Councilmember Moore, if you can make a quick, brief comment.
Just it's actually a question. So just to clarify, so we we were required to do the forty-five eighty-eight units, and we're up above this sixty-two hundred. Is that right?
Yes, it's right around sixty-two hundred if you put the buffer and the forty-five eighty-eight. Correct.
Okay. So what happens to the nine hundred units from Valco that aren't counted? Is that not in these numbers?
It's not in the numbers. Correct.
So we're really, we're at seventy-one hundred realistically.
If you looked at it that way, but HCD's
Doesn't look at it that way.
Not factoring those in. So I mean, I think there's an assumption, too. You could say a lot of those units probably won't get built in the in the timeframe anyway. It's it's largely, you know, making your best guess, your best estimate, and trying to put the land use in place to have those units get built.
And what's our cutoff to have those units get built?
Twenty thirty-one.
Twenty thirty-one. Okay. And one last one. Hamptons, how much of those units did they count?
Oh, none.
None. Six hundred there. So we're at if they were to build what they said they were going to build, we'd be at seventy-seven hundred. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, a quick, brief comment, please. We should wrap it up.
So we cannot count the new units from Hamptons because they were in the last housing element?
Because they're not foreseeably going to be built.
Okay.
They've made no progress towards developing that site.
Yeah. Although I think we shouldn't over on ambitious beyond the capacity that's required by HCD. But I would like to entertain the request from Marina Plaza to upzone to fifty to sixty-five. So why was that request not considered?
Marina Plaza is a pipeline project. So it is in the housing element. You cannot be a pipeline project and a housing priority site. So in the eyes of HCD, there's an approved project there, and we're getting credit for it. But you can't also be that and a prospective development site.
Then can we still consider rezoning Marina, not counting as housing element, so that they could consider developing at fifty to sixty-five units?
I think if whether it was through rezoning or some other means, I think there's several options to get more units. If they wanted to build a hundred additional units, there's ways we can get there, and we would get credit for those units. But we would not want to go back and alter the housing element at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And I just made calculated the units from those without the owner interest. It totals a hundred ninety units. And if we subtract that from the total we have right now, we are still we will be still over thirty-one percent comfortably. But unfortunately, we can change that right now. So yeah.
Vice Mayor Fruen, you get the last word or the second last word?
Yeah, so a couple of quick points of clarification. I actually did bring up the question of of Marina's request during my meeting with HCD yesterday, and got more or less the same feedback, which is that they have two relatively strict buckets that they put projects in. If you've got a pipeline project, it's a pipeline project. I think that's an overly restrictive view of their own mandate, but they're the administrative agency. They get to decide their rules. It would not preclude us from from being able to approve some other later rezoning. Again, going back to this is a floor and not a ceiling. If if we were to choose to enable a project that is denser, that would not be a problem for them, and we would get to count the units. With respect to sites being recycled, there is a provision in the law that basically says if you reuse a a housing element site from one cycle to the next, then in that following cycle, if you reuse it and you don't rezone it, in other words, you don't upzone it further, then you would have to institute a ministerial approval process for it. So it's a rather particular and unusual part of the law. I'd encourage you, councilmember Chow, to go back and review it. Having more sites just makes it more likely that we build more units. We have never met Arena, so I don't see any threat here. And and as far as, you know, the the comments with regard to, you know, density in smaller neighborhoods, I I'm sorry, I live in a duplex. It is not a threat to anybody's quality of life.
Last comment, councilmember Weah.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan, for accommodating my actually, it's a comment. I just want to thank the staff and city manager for getting this through. And I want to say, we can perceive anything we want. We can add the five hundred Hamptons. We can add the Simmons. But in the eyes of the HCD, that is what we're looking for. That's what who are we working for, working with, right? So I really want to compliment that you work with HCD instead of making assumptions that we think this could work, that could work. So that's just my compliment to my to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, congratulations to the entire staff who worked on the housing element. There's more to come, but I think the hard work is done. So with that, we will accept your staff presentation. And that concludes the study session for today. We have one more item from which was pulled off consent. And I I think councilmember, oh, should we do a time check?
Yeah, we we do have a closed session. Time's certain at ten o'clock, so I we would need to adjourn today's meeting.
Okay. And if we adjourn, what happens to that last item?
The item will get continued to the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Let us do that, then. We this regular meeting of the city council is now adjourned, and we will move to the closed session.
So so for members of the public, the the teleconference portion of this meeting is closing. If anybody does want to to comment on the closed session, we will be in conference room C in City Hall, and there'll be an opportunity for public comment before we close the session.
Okay, the meeting is now adjourned.